Should we go ahead and get started then? I know we've got some technical difficulties. It looks like that screen will not be working tonight, is that the word? So, I think someone else will have to rearrange their seats. But welcome to everyone, thank you for coming out this evening. I don't know if you have any introductory remarks, Mr. Webb, or anything you'd like to say?
Just thank everyone for coming out. I think we've hit a very important point in this project and I'm happy that we had a point to share with the public, some of the options that we've seen and hopefully everyone comes out on Saturday to share with us their thoughts as well, but I think this is a good starting point for us and we're at a good place.
Yeah, we're looking forward to hearing that. We're also looking forward, I think it's the first meeting our new superintendent has attended with city council, so we're delighted to have you here and we certainly look forward to working with you as time goes on, but thank you for coming out and your leadership to date, we greatly appreciate it. Before we get started, maybe I might suggest we just take a moment of silence for the victims of the London terrorist attack. I know they'll all be in our thoughts and prayers, we thank you for that moment. Mr. Shields and Mr. Noonan, would you guys like to take over?
Well, we will maybe say a few words, each of us, by way of introduction, and it has been really good working with Dr. Noonan over the last couple of weeks. The campus working group has also been meeting regularly to work with Perkins and Eastman on this feasibility study. This date tonight has been on our schedule now for two or three months, and so this is a big night, this is when the feasibility study gets presented to the joint bodies. The school board has already received a briefing on the feasibility study findings. Tonight really is about hearing the presentation, asking questions. But I do want to note a couple of key dates that are on your legislative schedule and they're coming up fairly quickly. And those include the council action or consideration of action of authorizing a referendum for the school bonds, which would need to be done by July 24th if it's going to be on the ballot in November. And that's done by ordinance, so that requires two readings and on the council's schedule, we have a work session then scheduled for June 19th to look at that referendum question, also to follow up on the questions from tonight. And then first reading scheduled for June 26th and then second reading for July 24th. There's a potential push, if we had to, we could do first reading on July 10th, but the goal would be to try to hit that June 26th date if that's the will of council to move forward. Similarly, when the council adopted the capital improvements program, it did not include the high school project, so an action to amend the CIP could follow that same timeline of work session on June 19th, first reading June 26th and second reading on July 24th. More immediately, as the chairman Webb noted, we have a community meeting on June 10th and this information that you see tonight will be presented to the community along with an update to the small area plan. And then one other key piece we'll be working through based on this feasibility study, the financing options and the economic working group has a date scheduled of June 16th to look at valuation of the commercial property, at least an initial draft of it, and that will be an iterative process, but we'll get their opinion on the valuation of the property scheduled for June 16th. So that also can inform the work session on June 19th. So those are a couple of dates that are coming up and tonight's discussion, I just wanted to lay those out so that we know we don't have to make decisions tonight, but questions, absorption of a lot of information and then next steps to follow. I'll turn it over to Dr. Noonan for introductory remarks from him.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Good evening, Mayor Tarter, members of the council, Chairman Webb, members of the school board. It's a pleasure to be here tonight as your newly appointed superintendent who was wide-eyed and sort of ready to go. It is really with great excitement and enthusiasm that I get to be here tonight to work alongside my colleagues on the school board, or my bosses on the school board, shall I say, as well as the council. This is a great opportunity, as I see it, coming in to continue the really wonderful spirit of collaboration that I've experienced already between the council and the school board and hope to continue in that same vein and very excited about that. One of the things I wanted to just preface this evening with is sort of how did we get to where we are with respect to some of the options you're going to see. As many of you are aware, last week we had an opportunity to hear the presentation by Perkins Eastman who shared five different options with us, three were new construction, two were renovations, and through a process of elimination based on a number of criteria, which included looking at the school program, the academic program, the athletics program and the like, we're able to winnow those five options down to three preferred options with one sort of emerging as the best option from the group for consideration. We know that, as I mentioned previously, there's not an option that is exactly what everybody's looking for, but we feel like there are some really good possibilities within each of these solutions. And I'm very excited to be part of a process where our school facilities will have an opportunity to match the outstanding school program that we have in place at George Mason High School and at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School. Just by way of sort of analogy more than anything, in about 2003, while I was working in Fairfax County, the city of Fairfax undertook a very similar process with respect to evaluating their high school and their middle school in the city of Fairfax and in 2003 was able to bond for just north of $85 million to do some of the same work that you all are doing. And in the process of doing that, made an extreme commitment, I think, in their schools, much like you all are considering this evening and going forward. And as a consequence of that, we recognized very quickly how those schools have become a tool for economic development, how they've become a tool for family members, families moving into our city, or my former city, excuse me, and really allowing for the school to serve in many ways as an instructional tool, meaning that oftentimes our facilities make a difference in the lives of kids. And yes, we can put really great instructors in front of kids and they're going to be fine, but if we have facilities that match that, we know that we're setting our kids up for even greater success. So I'm anxious and excited to engage in this process with all of you. Perkins Eastman has been a great partner with us and we are pleased to have them here as well to share the options.
Thank you for inviting us. It's been an honor working with Mr. Shields, Dr. Noonan, the committee, the school board, you know, the commitment to the future of the students and the environment that they learn in is really a powerful testament, I think, to what you're trying to achieve here, you know, as a community to create, you know, a great 21st century learning environment. Just by way of introduction, I'm Sean O'Donnell with Perkins Eastman. This is Andrea Shaw, also with Perkins Eastman. And also joining us is Chris Hartzler of Davis Construction, who's done all the estimating that we'll talk about at the end. So we have a lot to share. There's been a lot of discussion going forward here. We're going to go a little quickly through about the first half here because I think folks are probably anxious to see many of the options, but however, we think that the sort of forward portion of the presentation is important because it lays sort of the framework for, you know, the decision-making criteria that we'll use to evaluate each of the options. I know this is very challenging to see. If folks want to maybe swing around here, we've got some empty seats.
Yeah. Or will that, does that screen pull out at all? It doesn't?
Well, it just did. Wonder Woman strong back there. But by the way, let's try to find some chairs too, we've got a few extra folks here. There is one seat in the front, if you'd like to sit there.
You have seats right here as well.
And there are some seats on the side over here as well.
So as architects, we have a tendency to want to point, so the screen is a saving
grace, you know, for that tendency. But, so this is our agenda, we're going to go quickly again through the analysis process, again, where we establish the goals and really try to dig into the site and some of the programmatic criteria that underpin the options, but, you know, then we'll quickly sort of try to get to the goals. But this was our schedule, a six-week schedule to explore, you know, both the issues, you know, that need to be addressed through the feasibility study, then create some options that we'll share with you. We did look at a good number of options, we're going to share with you a fraction of them perhaps that have been explored. And now we're in this third stage of what we call the preferred option, where we're trying to winnow the field, as Dr. Noonan said, and get good solid estimates and budgets together, you know, for each of those options. One of the first exercises we did with the committee was just to establish what the goals for the project were, again, you know, using these as filters to really evaluate those options. Of course, supporting the great academic program, manifesting in George Mason is critical among them, but we are also taking a critical eye to some of the inputs such as the educational specifications that had been prepared, and we'll share with you some of the analysis that we've done on that. But then thinking about the future too, of how we create a great flexible building that, you know, can last for many years without significant reinvestment in that and continue to foster education here, you know, within Falls Church. But also think about the opportunity that, you know, this building really can manifest itself as a connection to the larger idea of the community connections fostered through the development of this campus and the continuing development around the campus, you know, at that end of the city. So again, it's part of a larger vision of Falls Church in many ways, you know, but of course, you know, with the education of our young students, you know, being of critical importance and then really to evaluate some of the options and feasibility and the phasing implications for the project. One of the things that's unique about this site though is that it has two institutions of higher education also adjacent to it, so part of the goal was to create, you know, what we thought of a continuum of education on the campus, so thinking about how children sort of matriculate through the entire system and hopefully have opportunities lying after George Mason and perhaps the architecture of the campus could foster that. Some of the challenges again, you know, are that education's changing very rapidly, how do we create a great architecture to support that? And thinking about the capacity of this particular site, that as with the mixed-use development, a new building, outdoor activity space, parking, how do all these things get accommodated readily on this site, you know, within the budget that we're putting forward here? And also to think about that asynchronous funding opportunities within the mixed-use environment. So with that, we'll walk quickly through some of the benchmarking that we've done relative to the ed specs that were provided and the enrollment projections.
Thank you, Sean. So we are going to go quickly through this because we bring it back later when we look at some of the cost analysis. So this is the enrollment that we were given at the start of the project, so 15 years out, we're at about 1,370 students at the high school. So we benchmarked the Falls Church ed specs against the ed specs of DC, Arlington, Fairfax County and Montgomery because we, as a group, decided those were peers in the region. And these are the data from that ed spec that we're designing around. So one thing we looked at was the classroom comparison, and again, I'm not going to focus on this because we come back to it later, but the big picture was that we found there was a possibility to be a little more efficient in the count of classrooms that's provided in the high school. The auditorium, we also found there was a possibility to look at some reduction in the size of the auditorium relative to the number of students in the school. The athletics program, again, looks to be a space that we could possibly trim square footage if necessary, related to the overall athletic department and the auxiliary gymnasium when we were comparing it to the other school districts. And the building size comparison, compared to the size of other high schools in your neighboring counties, at 1,200 students, it was above the others that we studied and at 1,500 students, it became closer on par with DC and Arlington. I apologize for that value number, it must have skipped place, but that's where it falls. And Fairfax and Montgomery were more efficient with the square footage per student than what we were looking at. So, in the options that we developed, we did keep the full amount of classrooms, the auditorium and the athletic departments as they were listed in the ed spec, but we reduced the parking space to 300 cars based on some of the site analysis and numbers that we ran through with our steering committee.
So this is your existing site, again, just using this as a benchmark for analysis as we go forward, so you can see that we've done takeoffs on the, basically the footprint for parking, for open space, for the building footprints here as a basis of comparison. We did compare this to about 10 different buildings from jurisdictions, both in the region and nationally as well, you know, just again, to use it as a guidepost, you know, to evaluate some of the future options.
So this is that site use comparison and on the left, you see the George Mason site as it is existing for the high school. And when we look at some of the other campuses we studied, if we take out the 10 acres for economic development, where the yellow arrow is pointing is probably more where we would like to be at 24 acres and a smaller footprint for the school and less parking on-site.
So, part of the analysis too was again, recognizing that we're part of a larger vision of Falls Church, but that we're also at sort of the gateway position, you know, here as you enter the site from Route 7 or, you know, at the endpoint of the system. But one of the critical questions for us was, you know, how should you arrive at this campus? And again, thinking about, you know, the limited capacity and surface area that we have of the site, so can we get people to this site, you know, through alternative modes of transport other than a single-use car? So you can see that there's a biking analysis here from one end of the city to the other, it's about a 15-minute ride in theory. And then also on terms of walking radius, you see that there's different areas here up to about a mile and a half, you know, roughly at the midpoint of the city. That mile and a half point, by the way, is where Arlington would start providing busing, so, you know, everybody to the left of that line would be in sort of the walk zone in Arlington. Your zone is much more generous, so you're providing more bus service, you know, again, trying to perhaps incentivize people to get here outside of a car. But the other thing to recognize is that we have a lot of parking around the site. In addition, we've got about 2,000 other parking spaces off-site, you know, between metro and the college campus site. And then we've also got a very, very convenient metro station and bus lines surrounding the campus too. So actually, one of the more transit-oriented sites of all the high schools that we studied, you know, during the benchmarking process. Also to think about, again, the relationships of this campus to the adjacent development and back to the city itself, that there are a lot of opportunities to encourage people to walk onto the campus or bike onto the campus and make greater connectivity to the surrounding areas, either existing or developing in the future. So that includes potential connectivity back to the metro station as well. So there's really another lesson, I think, in this diagram is that off to the right, we have a real ability to integrate into the city and provide strong connections, but then on the left side, that we've got sort of the back of the campus, you know, founded by 66 and the noise and some of the other issues associated with the highway ramps and the interchange there.
Getting back to the parking that I was talking about earlier, this was a study on the number of spaces available existing compared to some of the other campuses that we were looking at. So basically it was telling us that 300 parking spaces for the high school, the ratio of spots per student is much higher than some other high schools in the region, Dunbar, Yorktown, Bethesda, Wakefield, and as Sean said, the George Mason site is much more accessible in terms of transit and proximity to the residential neighborhoods. So I'll go through this really quickly, I don't even know if we need to look at this for that long in the interest of time, but basically we were calculating what the existing modes of transportation are. And so if we follow that through to the proposed, this is how we arrived at that 300 count, existing there's 361 and we're proposing 300. So that allows for some increase in the amount of staff parking spaces for the high school and the middle school, but decreases the amount of parking available for students, still allowing some for those students that may have commitments before or after school, whether that's family or job, but that's where that reduction in count occurs.
So another portion of the analysis that we did is how to make up, you know, what we consider a sustainable high-performance school. So we're strongly interested in making sure that the building is, conserves resources, of course, water, energy, but that it also incentivizes learning by creating what we consider a high-performance learning environment, so that's acoustics, thermal comfort, daylight, glare, views, all these things that, you know, create, building that potentially can really enhance educational outcomes here. So what we, this diagram is saying though is that we're at sort of 50,000 feet in the process here and there are certain decisions that you can make, you know, at that point in time that are critical to sort of leave opportunities open behind us for the subsequent work, but that we should start thinking about, you know, how big is the program, where is the building situated, how is it oriented relative to the sun? These are things that are, you know, the 50,000-foot level decision-making opportunities in front of us and then as the design process continues after this feasibility study, you can start to select systems and finishes and other things that start to fall into place at appropriate moments. But it's important for us not to preclude any options at this point. And one of those most significant options is simply orienting the building properly. So you're going to see that the building is cranked off the grid a little bit in most of the options, and the reason for that is that we're trying to optimize its orientation relative to the sun. So that does a couple of things for us. One, it potentially reduces the heat gain on the building because we can shade the building more readily in that position, so that reduces your operating cost over time. And you can see that savings on other benchmarks have been up to about 7% of the typical budget for HVAC associated with a building that's properly oriented. The more important thing perhaps is that we can control the daylight coming into the building and we can reduce glare, so we can create a better educational environment. And there's a lot of research showing that appropriately daylit educational spaces, children actually perform better educationally. So again, you're getting sort of a dual bang for the buck on strategies such as this. There are other goals that we put forward though, again, the goal was to keep the opportunities open as we go forward, but really it was optimizing for the educational environment, reducing resource consumption and enhancing this idea of a sort of comprehensive wellness environment. So again, starting to think about alternative modes to get to the campus at this point in time. But daylight and views and creating a great teaching tool and, you know, enhancing all the opportunities for renewable energy and appropriate materials and indoor air quality are all things that were laying the groundwork, I think, at this point. So this is a slide that we'll circle back on, again, you know, thinking about the other economic side of this, the coin of the mixed-use opportunities and what land is available for that relative to the options that we're going forward. And finally, I think before we jump into the options, we developed with the committee a series of design principles that you can see here on the screen. Again, these are filters that allow us to analyze each of the options to say, you know, are we really creating that great 21st century learning environment that we're hoping to do here? So let's figure out exactly what they are and write them down into these sort of discrete statements. So creating interdisciplinary neighborhoods, hearts of the school, fostering the hybrid learning program, and you have a fabulous already 21st century educational program occurring in this building, so let's try to figure out how to foster that and celebrate it. Ideas about how the library will evolve, thinking again about flexibility and also, you know, enhancing the professional work environment for teachers, you know, so I'm not going to read through all of these, but again, you know, these became the criteria that we started to evaluate each of the options with. Also that this is a great civic building, a center of community potentially, so we can organize it for active community use, but also that it should represent the power of the program within it, you know, by creating what we call civic presence. And then finally, thinking about again, its relationship to the larger city and how people arrive at this campus, you know, both as citizens, students and teachers, to think about safe routes to school and perhaps a transportation demand management program. So with that, that's a lot to go through in 10 minutes or so, but again, what we're trying to do is lay the sort of decision-making criteria for the options that we'll now go through here. We did look at probably 10 or 12 options we'll share with you, you know, the ones that made it to the shortlist and then the few that have been advanced by the committee here as well. One of the first questions was, as we started to look at the site, there is another group that's looking at the mixed-use development and you see the, one of the plans that they put forward for a sort of grid of streets on a sort of plus or minus 10-acre portion of the site. The grid of streets seems to make perfect sense here, it may be in a different configuration here, but it'll approximate, you know, some sort of grid working off of Haycock and Route 7 at that intersection in each of the options. But the other side of what we were looking for here was really where's the front door of the building and how does the, this new school site potentially represent again, where the front door is, what the civic presence is and how does it connect into the community? So we've been using this idea of creating a school street within those grids. The first school that we started with was driven by a question, what if we built over here sort of in where the bus loop is or the bus parking, some of the storage facilities, you know, it's sort of the underutilized portion of the site, so what if that were an opportunity for a building? We called it the field school because, you know, it's out there in the field to some extent. You can see that, you know, the high school then is sort of in the elbow of the 66 interchange. Mary Ellen Henderson is off to the right in sort of the white block and the fields are configured, you know, around the building. There's a new drop-off to come through, again, sorry, my tendency is to point, but a drop-off created in front of the building as well. This is just a simple massing of what it might look like. Again, most of the academic space, classrooms, labs are configured into a five-story block. This might actually be rendered at six because there was an earlier option that was removed from the pile, but we just wanted to show you the array. But then the more community spaces are on the wings flanking it, so you can see just the general massing. On the massing note, the mixed-use development, which are those big boxes off to the right, are just big boxes and sort of simple extrusions of the site, you know, that we don't know what the mixed-use program would be, so the height may vary, the shape certainly would vary from that, but this is sort of the maximum development that the other team was working with in terms of height. These are just a couple of different views of that. On the left, you see a view from what would be across from the fields and then on the right, a view of the sort of side of the building, you know, as you would be driving out of the city along Leesburg Pike. Mary Ellen Henderson is there in front of it and the mixed-use building is on the right most.
So this option looked at stacking the academic tower in the middle of the building, you'll see this in some of the other plans going forward, and then had a stack of athletic spaces and a stack of performing arts spaces, so this is looking at the building in section. And then we developed floor plans showing that, so. Going to go through it. And then we looked at staging it, which this was, you could build the school and the fields in the first phase and then the second phase would be demolishing the existing building and preparing that pad for the economic development. So in all these, the piece that is the economic development piece, we're not, we're not saying that that's the construction of those buildings, that's just preparing the pad for development. So, oh wait, go back, do we want, I mean, it was eliminated.
Yeah. Yeah, so we actually have a matrix at the end that'll give you sort of the evaluation of each of these options, but again, this one didn't make it sort of to the second round and we'll share with you why, partly because of its sort of disconnection from, you know, everything to the right and the idea of sitting on a particular portion where we know that we have foundational problems associated with the site, so perhaps also a cost driver there. The second option was called the community school, again, partly because it started to draw itself into a relationship to the mixed-use development and engaged, you know, more actively with the community structure, you know, being created know, being created by the mixed-use development on the 10-acre site. You can see that this one, unlike the last one, has all the field program accommodated, and the difference being that the multipurpose field where we're building that portion of the building that's labeled academic has, has been displaced to the right side of the diagram, creating sort of a field arrival to the new campus. The building is connected to Mary Ellen Henderson. One of the things we talked about was again, creating that sort of continuum of educational opportunity from the middle school into the high school, and sharing resources as well. So in this instance, the kitchen, for example, is, is built as a central kitchen, shared between the two, expanding on the existing facility within Mary Ellen Henderson. The commons building that we see here is where the gym, the theater, the dining, the learning commons will all be, so potentially available to community use after hours and zoned, you know, distinctly from what's the academic program, the classrooms and the labs and the academic tower. Its front door would be sort of at the terminus of the existing entry point onto the campus, you know, but terminating sort of an access on that new grid of streets here as well. Parking is distributed around the campus, so we've got, you know, we have the numbers actually here somewhere, but, but each of these options were over the 300 target typically, so, you know, plus or minus 340, you know, and typically in the options. But again, distributing some near the front door for visitor parking, faculty and staff back in that sort of elbow where the, the prior building was, and then retaining some of the parking on Mary Ellen Henderson. Mary Ellen Henderson's expansion is also possible to go forward over the front door, which is shown, you know, in the diagram here as well, and we're retaining the loading dock for that. That's correct, so thank you for pointing that out. So again, the grid of streets can change depending upon the development opportunities, and you can see that's even changed in this configuration, but yes, to the right is, is 10 acres relative to that opportunity. This begins to show just that same scheme overlaid on the existing, so when we start to think about phasing, you know, this is a relatively simple building to build in, in one phase, and we'll show you that, and as you can see, the existing high school can remain in operation, as can Mary Ellen Henderson, and some of the fields and, and other outdoor space opportunities, you know, would, would become opportunities for our swing space. Again, the main academic tower is cranked towards optimal solar orientation, so if you're wondering why it, it sort of turns like that, but it also starts to create opportunities for courtyards and other things, shared outdoor spaces between Mary Ellen Henderson and, and itself. You see again the multipurpose field as sort of the buffer between the campus and the mixed-use development in this diagram too. Couple of different views, left being sort of, you know, very diagrammatic of course, you know, but the idea of the blue being something glassy, maybe that, that is the front door, you know, coming in on that sort of entry axis that already comes off of the existing curb cut on Haycock, and just another view of the sort of massing relative towards Mary Ellen Henderson with most of the sort of public, common, shared spaces on that portion of the building.
So again, this is looking at the building in section, and the reason why we looked at this was because we realized that in order to reduce the footprint on the site from four acres to two acres for the building, that we would need to have a school that's more than one or two stories. So, in talking with the principal and assistant principal at George Mason and the steering committee, we felt like five stories was a manageable height for the high school, so you'll see this in most of the options. The bottom two floors are what you'd say more of the common spaces, spaces that could be open after hours, or on weekends, or during the summer. So, the first floor has the athletics and the performing arts program, as well as the administrative office and dining, and then the second floor has more of the same, as well as the library and the high C program, and then floors three through five are the more academic programs of your core learning spaces. And so, in plan, it's pretty simple as Sean explained, on the first floor, that public piece are those big box spaces like the gym and the auditorium and dining, and coming off of that, arts, and on the second floor, same thing, a continuation of the performing arts and athletics and the media, and on the third through fifth floor, the academics. So this allows the building to be separated, again, after hours from the academic use of the building. And so in terms of phasing, as Sean said, this allows for the school and the fields to be built as the first phase, and then after that's complete and the students can move in, then the existing high school can be demolished and the land prepared for economic development. So this means no trailers are required, and the first phase is in two years and four months, which goes along with the schedule that was in the RFP that we responded to, and then five months to prepare the right side of the site for development, so total of two years and nine months.
So just to make sure that that's clear, that doesn't mean that the mixed-use development is built in that five months, it means that it's a cleared site, and then the mixed-use development can proceed, just to make sure that everybody's understanding what we're talking about there. So the second one was really again, a question raised by the committee, you know, what if we inverted the diagram? People liked the fact that the commons sort of program space was between the sort of academic side of the high school program and the middle school, so that it could be shared very readily, so, and including the kitchens and other things. But what if we inverted the diagram and brought that academic tower, you know, over to the right side of the diagram? Here you see, you know, that the red line has shifted a little bit, and is now sort of L-shaped, so rather than just being sort of a straight vertical line here, what we've got is the 10-acre site includes these two gray boxes, you know, here, just below the academic tower. It gives us an opportunity to create a nice public space, you know, just south of the tower, where you see that the E there with the triangle, that would be the front door, into the, the academic wing, and create sort of a, a service courtyard between the academic tower and Mary Ellen Henderson, again, sharing loading docks, sharing kitchens, you know, trying to get the, as many efficiencies as we can, you know, between the, the interconnection of these two buildings. Mary Ellen Henderson is, is again, very similar, you know, with the opportunity to expand on the lower portion of the building relative to that in the future. We have all the outdoor activity and athletic space, you know, here, again, to the left side of the diagram, and opportunities again for more outdoor learning in front of the academic tower potentially, as, as we also deal with some drop-off both vehicular cars and buses as well on different portions of the site. You also see that there is a pool expansion in each of these diagrams, that's not currently part of the program, but it's just laying the, the foundation for that in sometime in the future. So again, overlaid on the existing high school, so this starts to indicate that, you know, this is a phased construction. We'll go into this in detail, but you can see that, you know, the academic tower sits astride one of the gyms and the existing dining facility, so, you know, this would then drive the construction of the commons portion of the building, and then a subsequent phase for the completion of the academic tower, as it were, of the building. So some massing diagram, just showing again the interconnection of the two buildings and its relationship to the mixed-use, and it's cranking to the solar orientation, creating that public space in front of the building, and just a couple of different views of that as well. In this case, and again, each of these options is trying to create a great sort of heart of the school that fosters the learning community. In this case, it's that sort of blue bar, the dining facility is, is being used to create that sort of central gathering space within the building.
And this layout is similar to the previous in terms of multi-story building, where the sort of commons part of the building includes the athletics, the theatrical, and the dining program, and then the academic piece has the admin, the library, the high C program, and academic on floors three through five. And then the floor plans, the first floor in the bottom left, so you can see the connection to the high school kitchen, that's the green portion there, that existed in the previous option as well. So, students are entering between the admin and the library and then coming back into the building for the athletics and arts pieces. Similarly, on the second floor, stacked athletics and arts, and on the third floor, same, except now the academic bar has become the classroom piece, and that continues through the fifth And then this one, as Sean mentioned, is two phases to build the school. The first is building that commons bar and the fields, that's one year, 11 months, and then once students can move into that space, then the second piece can be built, which is the academic bar, because we'll be able to demolish the gym and the cafeteria, and that's an additional one year, two months, and then a half-year, again, to demo the old building and prepare it for development. So this is three years, seven months.
So, this one took its name, civic school, from that sort of axis that comes through the, the mixed-use development. We thought, from the other team's work, that they were creating this sort of very civic gesture, that we should end it properly, and whereas it was sort of targeting the, the loading dock, you know, if we didn't build something, you know, at the end of that axis. So it generated an idea of building the commons facility, you know, at the end of that sort of street that's going from left to right, and creating again, an opportunity for something, you know, that has a great sort of civic presence. You can see the future pool there, the, so gyms, theaters, you know, the pool at that point would become sort of this, you know, very civic sort of amenity. The academic program, unlike the prior options, is now the, the connector to the middle school in this instance, and the bar has been sort of slid relative towards itself to make the turnaround, Mary Ellen Henderson. Otherwise, the site program is again, you know, fully realized. The orientation, you know, just, you know, on that note, varies on the fields, and, you know, oftentimes the fields are not necessarily optimally solari, solary, is that a word? Celery? You know, oriented, again, in deference to making sure that the building was, was optimized, you know, first, so, and just to point that out as well. Again, parking's distributed around the site, and then we have again, a service courtyard between the two buildings that, you know, takes advantage of the loading, but we have two disconnected sort of dining rooms in this, this scheme. So overlaying it on the existing campus, again, you see that, you know, we're in a phasing scenario here as well to implement that, however, it, it's the inverse, you know, sequence from the last, that the academic wing gets built first, and then the commons facility is, is built second. After that, the 10-acre line is again shown in, in red, just a sort of vertical line struck through the campus here in this instance. The massing again, showing the sort of common facilities, you know, off to the right there at the terminus of the axis through the mixed-use development, and the academic tower in this case, much like Eric, Mary Ellen Henderson, two sort of distinct neighborhoods on each floor. You can see Mary Ellen Henderson does this very similar move in this kind of shift of the floor plate here. Here's just a view on the left, down that axis through the mixed-use development to the facade of what could be quite elegant building, and the commons facility there, you know, creating again what we think of civic presence for the campus.
And this is very similar to the other ones with the performing arts and athletic spaces stacked on two to three stories on the common side, and then on the academic side stacked with the dining, the library program, and academics. And so this building, you could imagine being much more easily separated after hours in terms of having the gym and the theater available to both school use and possibly public use, and then to the north end of that is the dining, the library, and then the academic floors. And so as Sean said, this in the estimate is estimated as two phases to build the school, the first being the academic in the fields, and the second being the commons bar, with the third being the demolition, demolishing the existing school and clearing the land for three years and seven months. But we also could imagine that the phase one and two are combined for two years and seven months, and then demolishing the existing building, but that would require some trailers.
So our mandate was to study the new building options that we just shared with you, but also to think about opportunities for modernization in addition of a portion of the existing high school. So we have two options here to share with you. The portion of the building that we were asked whether or not we could save, includes the, the two gyms and what's called A Wing and, and the dining facility as well, for those of you familiar with the building. So it is, is really, you know, this L-shaped portion of the, the existing facility, that includes, you know, sort of the original construction of, of the campus, and again, you know, some of the additions that were made for the sciences in particular, and A Wing and the auxiliary gym. So, the hybrid schema, as it's called, tries to engage that. You'll see, you'll, if you look closely, you'll see that L-shaped portion, here are the two gyms, here's the, the L shape, here's the A Wing, and then there are a series of additions made to, you know, both reconcile the, the need for a front door for the campus at that point, and also to try and balance the program. Again, you know, we're trying to make sure that, you know, we're building an appropriate learning community in here, that the common facilities are in the right place, and that the academic labs, classrooms, and other amenities are also well situated for the school. So, a portion of the campus here, this would be the learning commons, the library, we're using commons perhaps too often here, but the front door there, again, with an entry plaza. The red line that you see struck through the site, however, is now at six acres, you know, for a mixed-use development, partly just because of the footprint, or most, or in its entirety because of the footprint of the existing building, driving that, that opportunity, you know, again, off to the right. There's plenty of loading and service opportunities between the two buildings, the primary academic wing is, is back behind Mary Ellen Henderson in this case, and again, the, the site program is, is the full complement of, you know, with the 300-plus parking distributed around the building. You can see the, the entry court, you know, also in front of the building, sort of facing east. This is an overlay, you can see the opportunities to salvage, you know, that portion of the building, the roof color changes on the existing building, so that's why the diagram's a little hard to read, but the dining, the two gyms, the A Wing are, are, you know, here in this This is what it starts to look like, again, trying to maximize the footprint by, you know, going up that five floors, you know, to achieve the, the new sort of instructional program here. The library, see off to the right, you know, close to the mixed-use development, and also giving the campus a bit of a presence on, on Leesburg Pike, the front door. And also, we were asked, one of the difference between both of these options and the prior two options is that the physical education component of the educational specification is, is reduced. So, then the, the genesis of that question was, you know, what does it do to the overall cost of the project, you know, if, if we try to reuse the existing athletics program, the physical education program in the existing building? That said, we were also asked though, in the future, if we were to add a gym, where would it go? A full-size competition gym, and that's what's being shown in the massing right there, again, adjacent to the existing athletics program, but it does demolish a portion of the A Wing in the future instance. Couple different views, again, you know, of the front door and what it looks like from Leesburg Pike, so, you know, again, trying to think about how it integrates into the, the development and how people arrive graciously onto the campus.
And so because of the larger footprint of this building, there's not a need to be as stacked as we were with the other programs, so that, that first floor is really where all the commons-public spaces are located, and the academics in the tower above. And so, again, the, the existing building, it's a, difficult to kind of get the adjacencies that you want, so some of that program is spread out across the building. You can see the image on the right shows in dark blue the main gym expansion that would happen in the future, that requires demolition of some of the existing building, and if there's a future pool built, that would require further demolition of the existing. And if there's a future pool built, that would require further demolition of the existing building. So we're reusing the existing kitchen and cafeteria and expanding that. That's where it says heart, but it's dining slash entry. And then the existing athletics pieces are reused as athletic pieces. And so the phasing gets a lot more complicated. The first piece is to build the academic wing and renovate the fields or relocate the fields. Phase two is renovating the existing building. Phase three being building the library and the admin and the expanded dining on the east side of the school. And then four being the economic development prep for the land. So that's a total of four years, which is a year and a half longer than the new school.
So this is a scheme that saves less of the existing building. Really, what's being saved are the two gyms and the dining room. You see, the A Wing is replaced by the academic building and its new construction at this point, and then the commons facilities are interconnecting with Mary Ellen Henderson. So trying to resolve, in many ways, the disconnect of some of the academic programs that existed in the prior diagram, for example, where the sciences or some other instructional program would be in the A Wing, disconnected from the rest of the sort of instructional program. So you can see, again, it's overlay here on the existing. It is a multi-phase project like the other, but trying to create, you know, again, entry conditions and then different ideas of what the building presents itself here as on Leesburg Pike. Again, the academic wing, you know, becomes a sort of predominant read of the building, you know, in the community, but front door opportunity is integrated into the mixed-use development here as well.
And similar to the hybrid school, the academic school has a very large first-floor footprint and then a stack of academic classrooms. And in floor plan, you can see that here. And in the image on the right, that plan shows the main gym expansion in dark blue in the future with a possible pool expansion off that, should that come about. And again, with the phasing, it's very similar. I think there was a couple months savings in a little bit here and a little bit there, and it got down to three years and nine months as a four-piece process.
So I'm sure this is incredibly difficult to read. I think we gave you a cheat sheet, and so...
It's on the back. There was a handout, and it's on the backside.
So the difference between what you're looking at here and in the handout is that the shortlist...
What options?
Yeah, and we can certainly talk about that. There were other options, as we suggested, and there, amongst them, was an option to... Maybe we can just go to the existing site here. One option was, again, to retain at least a portion of the existing building, which you see in the underlay here, and then to build the academic towers as a sort of independent building back here somewhere proximate to where the community school option showed that. And if you have the handout, you can see the community school where the academic wing is. That idea, you know, was considered, but when you look at the evaluation criteria, again, that you have both in your handout and in the screenshot that we have here, when we started to run it against, you know, the criteria that we established, again, in that front piece of what are our goals, what are the design principles, what are we trying to achieve in a 21st century learning environment here, you know, it was racking up a number of reds. And so we thought that, actually, the options that are portrayed here tonight are more successful in achieving, you know, some of those goals. That said, when you look here on the screen, you know, the field school was removed from the mix by the committee, feeling that it did not sufficiently satisfy those goals, so it didn't continue forward into the final mix. And then, but the three options that the committee felt were worth continuing forward for a number of different reasons included the community school, the civic school, and the academic school, as they're called here. So two new building options and one sort of modernization in addition option. So you can see the evaluation criteria here, going through that. The community school scores relatively highly on most of the criteria, and it's also driven by its situation on the site, that it can be built in one phase, it integrates with the middle school, it integrates with the mixed-use development. So in many ways, it satisfies the criteria. It could be a very sustainable building, and also the constructability, and again, the cost impacts associated with phasing or other site implications were within reason within the other options. The civic school has, again, a little bit of a phasing challenge associated with it. You know, again, with trailers or modulators, you know, some of that could be mitigated, and it could be built as a singular phase of construction. So, again, but those were the primary issues, you know, everything from the heart of the school to the continuum of education, the civic presence, to active community use, to safe routes to school. It scored as well as any option there as well. The academic school, the modernization in addition on the right, again, as we talked, it has a certain amount of challenges. It doesn't fulfill the full ed spec, because, you know, that was, in many ways, its mandate was to try and reduce the square footage to control cost, you know, through that strategy. So, you know, so it has some challenges associated with that, and its configuration, you know, resulting from the sort of inboard activity space, you know, within the footprint of the campus. It is a phased construction, and it is, you know, there is a certain amount of complexity of keeping the campus operational during, you know, while we're reusing that existing building, but Fairfax does this kind of construction all the time. So, you know, it's certainly very possible and, you know, and proven, you know, through your neighbors. These are the three sites here indicated in red, you know, just to reiterate, you know, the community school, the civic school, and the academic program. And some of the data, again, associated with that, we won't reiterate this, but, again, you know, slight difference in the size of the buildings, you know, based on the configuration. The schedule, of course, the community school being the fastest relative to that.
And so the schedule that you see above that dark gray line is the schedule that we were given in our RFP, and that has construction starting in March of 2019 and being complete in June of 2021 for the school. So that means that rising fifth graders would begin ninth grade in a brand-new school. So when you compare the three options, looking at schedule, the community school can meet the schedule. The school completion date is that June 2021, and then after that, the existing school could be demolished and the land prepared. The civic school, if we build it as the two phases that we were looking at, is three years and seven months, which puts it at January 2022. But if we look at it in terms of building it in one phase and having some trailers, we think we can bring that back about seven months and get it closer to the start of school in 2021. But the academic school being multiple phases, we really don't see that taking less, any less than three years and nine months, which means it's a year behind the new school schedule. And so then the big question was, what would it all cost? And so we had a collaboration with Davis Construction to prepare estimates for the, actually, for five of the options, but for the three that it was narrowed down to. The numbers you see on the left, community at 110 million, civic at 119 million, and academic at 103 million. Those are the hard costs. Those are the construction costs. We'll add on the soft costs later. So what we're looking at is the bars in terms of what's the cost for site, right? So it varies between 10 and 14 million. What's the cost for the fields? They're all the same, close to $5 million. The cost for demolition is actually slightly higher in the new schools because there's more building to demolish. We're not saving a piece of it. The cost for the renovation, you see only in the academic school, and that's about $8 million. Then the actual construction and additions is more in the community and civic school, about 66 to 70 million, whereas the academic is 45, because we're constructing less square footage in terms of the new addition. We also looked at phasing costs, which was nothing for community school, some minor costs for civic, and more significant at about 2 million in terms of academic. And then the cost of work, which includes a number of things, you know, the overhead and profit, the contingency and items such as that, and then the escalation, because this will not get bid until about, I think it's 19 months from now or 20, 20 months from now. So there's escalation to get to that point, and we'll go into this a little bit more. And I do want to note that the cost for the academic school does not include the future athletic expansion of the gymnasium and some other associated spaces, which the steering committee said assume that won't be built for 10 years, so escalating it to 2027 put at about $15 million to build that athletics addition in the future, so that the overall academic would be 103 plus 15 million in the future. And so I think the first question that came back from the committee about the modernization schemes, hybrid and academic, was, well, why are the renovation costs as, you know, high? Why are those schemes coming in comparable, somewhat comparable to the new construction estimate? So when we look at renovating a space, because we're not just renovating it in isolation and saying, hey, let's just put on a new roof, we're renovating it and tying it in with new additions, and we're moving program around, which means that we've got to renovate it to meet current codes. So there's life safety issues. We have to meet ADA. Some of the equipment in the building has to be replaced, the envelope itself, if we want to try to get it in close to being energy efficient as the new construction would be. We'd have building envelope changes to make, such as new windows, new roof. And then mechanical and electrical systems would have to be upgraded, sprinkler system, and then fire alarm. So one of the other things that went into it, if we need to allow for the athletics addition in the future, then some of the systems in that renovation would have to be sized to allow for that future athletics expansion. And then, of course, renovating spaces. So then the next piece was, so we had the hard construction costs, which were the numbers you saw, 110, 119, and 103, but there are some other costs, which we call soft costs, that go into the cost of building a project. So there's the architecture and engineering fee, the construction management fee, the furniture fixtures and equipment, which we call FFNE, and then permitting and utility fees. So the pie chart that you see on the right, the red portion of the pie is the actual construction hard cost to build the building, and then those other slivers are the other pieces that you need to basically get to the point where you can build it. So the community school's around 123 million, civic at 133, and academic at 116 with the soft costs included. I don't know if we want to stop or continue. We had the possible ways to impact cost, to reduce cost. Okay, we'll run through. So we were also asked to look at ways that we could reduce the cost of the project, so we have several slides detailing that. So we were looking at, could the ed spec be more efficient? Are there spaces that we could reduce from that? So one thing to look at would be the option to remove 10 classrooms and their associated spaces from the program. So this is the chart that I skipped over quickly before. But what you see in the, the golden bars are the size of the classrooms, which your ed spec is on par with other peer counties. But what you see in the background, that sort of lighter yellow with the numbers, the .0 numbers, are the classrooms per student. So at 1,200 students, it's .038 classrooms per student, and at 1,500, it's .031 classrooms. And you can see DC, Arlington, Fairfax, and Montgomery are lower, ranging between .027, .023. We look at this, but we also have a school scheduling subconsultant that looks at the actual schedule of the, scheduling of the classrooms, and with that work said that if we were to utilize the classrooms for six out of every seven periods instead of five out of every seven periods, which six out of seven being about an 85% efficiency, which is pretty typical, that we could look at reducing it by 10 classrooms. So if you take that square footage, multiply it by the cost, add that sort of cost of work to that, we think this could be about a $2.5 million savings. That was a mouthful. Okay. Another thing we looked at for making a more efficient program was the Performing Arts Department. And I think a slight reduction to the auditorium and stage square footage, as well as some of the black box and some of the, I think it was, storage space in comparison to what we're seeing in other districts, was about a 2,500-square-foot deduction, which led to about $700,000 in savings. We also looked at the athletics department. The bar you see here, the deeper golden bars on the left are the overall square footage of the athletic department for Falls Church compared to the other counties. And then the middle bar is the main gym, and the right sidebar is the aux gym, I would point, but... So the size of the main gym is on par with other counties, but the aux gym, we think there could be some deduction in the size of that, as well as the overall athletics department, some sort of square footage savings to be had there, so we're seeing about $1 to $2 million savings there. Another thing we were asked was, what if we didn't do geothermal, which we don't recommend because the payback period doesn't seem to be that long? I think a study that was done said it could be about a nine-year payback period for that system, as well as, you know, there's an increased lifecycle cost due to the increase in energy cost if we are not pursuing geothermal. But we do see that could be about $1.7 million savings. The graph on the bottom is saying that their energy use from the current building down to the new construction is a 52% savings, but from new construction to new construction with geothermal is an additional 58% savings, so it has quite an effect. Another thing we were asked to look at was deferring the athletic field improvements. So this would mean constructing the school without, to the best of our capability, impacting the fields. This sort of approach varies a little bit in each option, as you saw with the community school. The academic bar overlaps the existing multipurpose field, so that would mean there is no multipurpose field. The other consequence of doing this is that in the previous phasing diagrams we showed you, the staging for construction would be onsite on those fields. But if we say we're not going to touch the fields, then staging needs to either happen off-site, or it needs to happen in the existing parking lots of the building, and then people would be parking off-site. So there could be some added costs there. And, you know, the construction is not going to just completely stay off the fields. There'll probably be some repair that's necessary around those. I think we're almost done with the options here. And then the other thing we looked at was, what if we constructed the civic school in one phase that we kind of talked about before? But we estimated there is a savings due to the reduced schedule and not having a phasing premium, but there would be an added cost for trailers, so it's probably about a $1 to $2 million savings, but it would reduce the timeframe by, I think it was, seven months. And then also for discussion is the cost impact when it comes to new construction, turning over 10 acres for economic development, and the sort of hybrid and academic options where we're only turning six acres over for economic development. What does that mean in terms of the loss in revenue from those additional acres during that, due to that construction? Construction footprint, I should say. So that was the... That was the cost piece, which I'm sure you want to talk about.
So I think this is our last slide, right? So we're glad to open this up for discussion.
Is that it? You're done?
Yeah, that's enough, right?
Funny, yeah.
There's a lot to cover.
Yeah.
Thank you for that very thorough presentation. Maybe you could turn the lights up, too. It might be easier for people to see. I guess you guys have seen it, Mr. Webb, and I don't know if you want to start with comments, if you have any additional comments or questions, but...
Just that when we looked at this last week, we, these are the three options that we came up with. For us, by far, when we kind of pulled around the room, the community school was the option that the majority of the school board supported. It was the giving, taking and looking at it from both our educational specs, as well as trying to allow for the 10 acres. It made the difference of making sure that we had what we needed, but also giving the community the option for the full 10 acres for development, which ultimately we're recognizing that we do need that part of it to make this more affordable for the community as we move forward with it. It's going to, the number has definitely gone up and down, but really, from when we started this project about two years ago, I guess, at this point, three years ago, as the vice mayor is telling me, the price has kind of stayed generally right around what this has done. And I am more confident in these numbers because we've actually did a test fit of what works on the site and what potentially will give the acreage of 10 that we focus on the economic development side of been wanting. But we also recognize that there is a group of citizens in the community who wanted us to make sure that we looked at a renovation option, so that's why the academic school is being presented as well, to make sure that we're recognizing both the parts of the community who want the new construction, but also those who want the academic, well, excuse me, the renovation. And it's, and for me personally, the renovation doesn't necessarily save as much as some may had hoped. And I think for giving the economic development part of it, that's going to be an important and critical part of this project for us to afford it. I think looking at the new options, I think are very important because it gives the full, recognizes the full 10 acres of the project. But I'm very interested to hear, being that most, about half of your side has seen this before, but very interested to see what some of the reaction is from your side.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We'll get started on that shortly. Just a couple reminders. The public, I know, is very interested in this. There's plenty of folks here today. This is a work session, so the public doesn't have an opportunity to speak today. But again, on Saturday, Saturday morning, is it 9:00 or 10:00?
9:00.
9:00. There's a public meeting that'll last several hours, and you all have an opportunity to speak at that time. There's also a public, a city council meeting next Monday, and you will also have an opportunity, if you choose to, to speak at that meeting. Also, I just want to remind folks that we do have another project coming to see us at 9:00. The planning commission is here as well, so just be mindful that we do have more things on the agenda for later this evening. But with that, why don't we move on to comments or questions from council, if there's no more on the other side of the table? Do you want to start, Ms. Hardy?
So like the vice mayor, I've had at least six days to adjust and have these numbers kind of settle a bit, but I, too, was kind of disappointed that we didn't have, that these numbers are obviously much higher than what we've seen in the past. I'm disappointed that we no longer have kind of a truly affordable option, and so I'm actually glad to see the levers being present at the end, because I think some of those levers, to me, seem like no brainers. I think clearly, at the end of the day, they are school board decisions as it impacts the academic program. But given the benchmarking that Perkins has been did at the beginning, it seems like those are the right places to start looking at, as opposed to trying to do cost cutting at the end, or, you know, value engineering, which I feel like always ends up cutting the wrong things. So I think the benchmarking was kind of done well, given that we looked at all of our neighbors. I still think that there's probably opportunity to do more, because we are still quite well north of where I think we were hoping to land in terms of what would be affordable and what we think would likely pass a referendum. But having been on the steering committee, and I've seen this now for the fourth time, I'll probably let other people react to it and not take more time than...
Did you have anything, Ms. Oliver?
The main comment I have, as I look at our schedule going forward, is that we need to come back to the question of affordability and what our options are and our levers are. And I see that we have this June 16 draft valuation report for the economic development portion of it, but I do not currently see anything on the schedule in which we're specifically reviewing financing options and going back to our financial policies, which we deferred. And now we need to fit that into this timeframe so that if we're going to present something to the public in November, we can talk realistically about what the economic impact on the individual taxpayer is. So, Mr. Shields, I would just ask that you take a look at where we're going to squeeze those things back into this aggressive schedule.
The intention was to discuss the financial impact along with the economic impact, so those two things are evaluated at the same time. So there's a straight cost, and then there is the potential for the economic development to impact that cost. And it really needs to be seen that way. I think when it, you know, if this is put on the ballot, there needs to be a very clear discussion about what the straight costs would be, and then how the economic development could mitigate that if everything stays on schedule.
I think I'm talking specifically about the financing options that may or may not be available if we are going to stay in compliance with policy. So that is something, because we did not change our policies beforehand, we also need to come back to that question of policy.
Mr. Snyder, anything?
So these three options that we have and the cost estimates, are they all for the maximum number of students, or there is a range of student populations, right, 1,200 to 1,500? Now, what are these costs for? Is it for the 1,500-student school or the 1,200-student school?
The intention is that what changes to allow the 1,500 is that greater utilization of the building would allow for our teachers to float, for example, and the classrooms to achieve even greater utilization than when it would open for 1,200. So it wouldn't actually change the architecture, it would change the class scheduling.
So these are the numbers for the 1,200-student school? That's the way to look at it?
Both, in fact.
In other words, I couldn't say, this is for the 1,500-student school, and if we decided to phase, for example, it would be less. What you're telling me is this, these are the estimates for the 1,200-student school?
It's, in fact, accommodates 1,200 with your current policy of teachers controlling their classroom. But then if teachers were then floating, as it were, they didn't control the classroom any longer, they shared it with other teachers, you could increase enrollment by getting more efficiency out of your class schedule, so therefore you could go up to 1,500 in the existing architecture of the, you know, as the building opened.
Okay. So the answer to my question is really, these numbers are for the 1,200-student school?
No, it's for both.
They could be, they could be expanded to 1,500, but what I'm getting at is, if one were to argue that you only wanted to build for a 1,200-student school and then phase it for 1,500-student school, what you're telling me is these numbers are for the 1,200-student school, that then can be modified internally to make... I'm just trying to figure out what these numbers represent. What are we building here with these numbers? I'm just...
So, so let me make sure I got the class schedule here.
I think I understand what you're asking, and technically, yes, but we're not to get to 1,500. We're not going to be adding an addition or anything to it. We're just going to maximize the efficiency of the rooms that we're going to have in the building.
Right.
So the footprint is going to be 1,200, but if we continue to grow, we can maximize and do what a lot of school systems are already doing of sharing classrooms where every teacher does not get their own classroom. We can get to 1,500 with what we're looking to build currently.
Right. Because we've gotten some email from some constituents suggesting that building a 1,200-student school, you could fairly dramatically reduce these costs, and I'm not hearing that. In other words, these costs are for a minimum, forget minimum, these schools, these costs are for the 1,200-student school that could be expanded internally to 1,500?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The pool, are the costs of a pool figured in here or not?
No.
No. And then just in terms of other capital projects that we're looking at, what's the current proposal for the city hall?
In terms of additional debt, it would be 13 million.
13 million, and then a potential eight for the library. That was the estimate, right?
8.7.
Okay. So we're dealing with 147 or so million total capital. Okay. In terms of affordability. And then the other thing to keep in mind, too, about financing is that, as I understand, having served on the Friday group that deals with economics, regardless of what we do, there's highly likely to be a gap between when we would build the school and bring on the debt versus when we would get significant amount from economic development. There's a gap of some kind, years. Okay, good. All right. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor, anything?
Thank you for that presentation. Like Ms. Hardy, I've seen it several times, and every time I see it, I think, oh, there's that one more thing I want to ask. Regarding the geothermal that you included, and geothermal puts it above lead silver or more efficient than those standard, I'm asking that as a question.
Yeah, I, it's, again, thinking about the energy efficiency, I, it's, again, after that eight- or nine-year period, you know, it's essentially, you know, free in some ways, you know, so it's paying itself back for that initial period in terms of the premium, but then ultimately it starts paying down, you know, the energy costs.
But as far as the energy efficiency and quality of the building, it's a better quality building than just a lead silver?
Yes, and certainly you could aspire to much greater than lead silver, and we're leaving that window open. It's also a very conventional system here in the mid-Atlantic at this point. Washington has probably a half dozen systems at this point. Alexandria has systems, you know, Arlington has geothermal systems, you know, so it makes good economic sense, you know, in the mid-Atlantic in general.
Is it possible to do that with the academic school, the renovation? Can you still do geothermal, and is it as efficient, or...
Well, for, the challenge with the academic school would be with the sort of inherent building envelope, you know, being less efficient. The efficiency of that system would be comparable, you know, and the footprint, you can imagine, it probably takes about a football field, you know, to fully operate the building on a system like this, you know, in terms of the well field, you know, that would be required, you know, just to give you a scale comparison.
Right, okay. And then there have been different numbers tossed around in the last six months in Falls Church that perhaps we could do a renovation for $65 million or $78 million. And one of the things that I think what your feasibility study says to me is, those are interesting numbers that were weighed and thought about, and, but it's actually not feasible. I mean, is that a good conclusion to draw from what you've done here with a feasibility study, is to look at those ideas and then say, it's just not going to work? As much as we wish we could get a school for $65 million, it just isn't feasible.
I think that's the conclusion, is that, again, you know, with the goals that you've established to create, you know, an appropriate 21st century learning environment that you're going to get operational for 60 or 70 years, you know, that you would not get that with that option. And F, in essence, what you'd be creating is a building that is partly of the 21st century and partly of the 1960s. So, you know, it's, they're sort of disparate things. And then once you try to put the programs together, as Andrea was saying, you drive the, all the sort of triggers to bring everything up to compliance, you know, with current codes, that that building currently doesn't do. So, so the answer is, you know, it doesn't achieve the academic vision upfront. It creates sort of disparate environments that would be of very different qualities and standards, you know, relative to, you know, the aspirations of the academic program.
And then my last question is more of a statement, really, and I'm going to give Mr. Rankin, our planning commissioner, credit for this one, because we talk about the financial risk of $123 million being spent on a school, but there's also the risk of not doing it. And what are we, what would, what kind of risk are we putting in front of our community if we don't do it? And I think that's something we all need to keep in mind, is that there's a huge risk to saying, ah, that's too much money, we can't do this, because we know we have to educate the children that are here, and the quality of the building that we have right now is subpar to our programs. As Dr. Nguyen mentioned, this could really change the game for Falls Church students.
Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. Unlike others, this is the first time I've seen this. So let me try to react to the presentation as best I can. I want to thank Sean and Andrea for doing an excellent job of pacing us through practically an hour of closely spaced, carefully parsed presentation of facts and conclusions. I am still trying to digest all that, and so you'll forgive me if I'm sounding a little bit disjointed. I think that your analysis has been very carefully well-done. You've benchmarked not only local educational facilities, many of them based on your own experience, but also nationally, and from that, you've drawn a bunch of conclusions. I would say that since you're primarily tasked with an educational program, that what would sell this complex to the community would be that which could be used by the community in a larger sense, and of course, you are largely precluded from looking at that. I do thank you for having the courage of your convictions to reduce the number of parking, even though you were told to give us 400, that you reduced it by at least 25%. I think in your heart of hearts, if you were given complete free rein on this, that you would reduce even more. As a matter of fact, in your community school program, you've already identified a north and south block that could be easily eliminated and given over some other use, so, you know, that one is clearly a softball, so that cuts out another 100 parking spaces, I think. Given my background in urban design, also as a registered architect, I think that your community school siting and your location program is excellent. That's kind of where I would end up, was that is clearly the most efficient use of the space. The other ones have large gaps that are given over to, I don't know what happens here. It could be just loading dock, it could be just, I don't know what, it could be just where you locate the dumpsters, I guess, but it's, you know, I think it's easy to see that those are not quite as well-resolved as the community school. I'm also heartened by the fact that this, two, three years after we first started to discuss this, the cost seems to be less than what was originally proposed, at close to $140 million. So I think if we waited another four more years, we might see even further erosion in the cost. Having said that, let me ask a question here, then. Did you look at the impact of further delay?
Yeah, we've talked about it. The current escalation is about 5% per year in the market that we're in right now. The market is hot, you know, at this point. Doesn't mean that the escalation couldn't change, but, you know, it never really goes negative, you know, within that. So the reason that you're seeing reduced costs in part is that the ed spec has continued to tighten from the prior iterations, you know, so there's been a sort of belt tightening that I think has been driving that, and, which is the trail we're still on, as you saw in the presentation.
I appreciate that. I have looked at the escalation for this particular class of buildings and the kind of construction in this area, and has held fairly constant from 4.3 to 4.8, or as you rounded up, 5% being conservative over the last five years, so that is a good number. I think that's a number all of us should keep in mind as we go forward and enter the discussion of affordability. Let me just say that from the outset, that at this point, I'm ready to commit to a complete tear-down. But having said that, I'm not prepared to say when I think we should go ahead and build it. That's a whole different question. And if we're going to have economic development, perhaps that should be the head of the dog that drives and not the tail, that... and the drives, and not the tail, that, well, you know, whatever, whatever that is. Not the tail of the dog wagging. Forget it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. I think I'd agree with the school board's consensus for the community school option. Two primary reasons. Number one, it does maximize the acreage for economic development. Everything that we've been given to understand is that 10 acres is a number large enough that it'll capture the attention of the market, and so, I've always hoped that we can hold out for a school option that would afford us 10 acres of opportunity. I agree with Mr. Z that the minimizing of acreage devoted to surface parking is a highly commendable element of the community school option, and would hope that as we went forward with the community option, if that's what we do, and do economic development, that we'd eventually be able to phase out more of the surface parking and perhaps dedicate it to playfields, assuming that we can handle whatever parking needs we might have as part of the mixed-use development right next door, particularly for staff and teachers. I think it, just in listening to your presentation, it is the first time I've heard the whole thing, I think it would be helpful for the community to hear more about the research case for academic performance being enhanced by new construction. There was a mention of that. I've had some really interesting discussions with people here in town who come from very different backgrounds, some of which, you know, some of whom came from districts with very modern facilities, and others from situations internationally where the facilities are, you know, nearly primitive. And you can have a really interesting debate about the impact of teachers and motivated students and so forth, regardless of what kind of facility they're learning in. My personal belief is that the community, you know, sort of sets forth its values and the structures that it puts up, and if a community values education, it should, you know, communicate that to the students who are learning in, you know, 21st century environment. But I do think the community would benefit from whatever research is out there that makes a data case for the kind of investment that we are talking, which is substantial, leading me to the point about linking the financial impact of the cost and the impact of potential economic development. So as I understand it, Mr. Manager, the meeting on June 16th is where those data streams begin to come together, where we hear about the potential for the market to generate revenue out of the economic development acreage. Is that, is that right? Is June 16th when we would begin to get some information on that?
That's when we'll begin to get information on that.
Okay, just begin, that's fine. Okay. As a couple others have mentioned, I think, understanding the, the costs of not moving forward, or moving forward with something that is not completely new, would be useful to hear what, what are the operational costs of not new construction compared to new I think that's, you know, a potential area for, you know, some differences that don't show up in the data that you've presented so far. Cost of delay, of course, you've got a number there. If it's 5%, that's 6 million. If it's only half of 5%, that's still 3 million, so the time that we're going to invest in deciding how we're going to shave down the program, if we take a year to save $3 million and the price tag goes up $3 million, then we've, we've really wasted a lot of time for absolutely no reason at all. And that's sort of the opportunity cost of, you know, we need to get on with deciding this so that we can move on, then, to other things that will enhance the community, promote economic development, and address other educational concerns that we have about some of the other facilities. Not that we're going to speed through this, but it is worth noting, as others have said, that the number has remained somewhat stable over the last three years, if we're talking about unduly constructed school. I think that's all I have for now, thanks.
Okay, I don't have a whole lot that hasn't been said before. I do have a couple of questions. One, your interval of confidence on the numbers you've given us, in other words, plus or minus, you know, you think we're in 10% range, 5% range, what do you feel the confidence level is in the numbers?
That's why you're here, man, but. The numbers are pretty, they're priced for what we've seen and some comparables. We also have some contingencies built in because we're pricing off of very nice sketches, but they're very conceptual sketches at this point. So there's some contingencies baked in to help prevent some of that, but they're, they're pretty, we stand behind those numbers if, if we fell into the timeframes that we're looking at right now.
So the numbers that we've been given are for construction commencing in, whatever, 2019. So that's an estimate, so that's taking today's numbers and adding 5% per year on top of those, correct?
That's correct.
So you believe today that when we start stroking checks, or start signing contracts in 2000, GMP contract, 2019, that's the numbers we'd be paying?
That's correct, based on what we've, you know, talked about with the ed spec and the size and everything else.
And in terms of just like a ballpark kind of confidence level, you think they're, you feel highly, highly confident they're within 5%? I mean, what's sort of your range where you would say, you know, that number?
I think 5% is a good number, based on what we've seen so far, and, you know, I think we're in line with what Perkins Eastman's seen, and some of their comparables, and some of our comparables as well. We have been looking at surrounding jurisdictions, you know, Fairfax, Arlington, you know, again, you know, to see how these numbers are falling out, independent of Chris's work, you know, just as a sort of self-check. So we're, we're pretty comfortable with where they're at.
And are your estimates based on just per square footage numbers? In other words, this is what we think blended numbers? Are you actually sort of programmatically saying, so we think a gym cost, is we think this cost and that cost? Are you just adding them all up in pieces?
More of the latter. So historical costs for fields or tennis courts, and different types of programmed space. So yeah, it's, it's more of the latter. It's not as clearly defined because we're working on very rough square footage numbers right now.
Okay.
As far as the size of these spaces.
Okay, okay, that's good, that's good to know. Let me ask you also, you gave some benchmark numbers, I think I heard, so I did see your presentation at the Economic Working Group as well, and there were some numbers where the city seemed higher than benchmarks or our neighbors. If you took all those benchmark things and put them back to the mean, or wherever our neighbors are, the average is, do you have a rough idea of what kind of cost savings that is? Are we talking, you know, $2 million, are we talking $15 million?
Well, that was the genesis of those last few slides was, you know, and I'm not sure that we're back to the mean there, you know, so there might be some additional space that you could get out, but I think what we're suggesting is with further evaluation, the ed spec could tighten up, and I think we're in the five, six million dollar range just across the slides that we just showed you. You know, so we think, you know, maybe you could reap a little bit more, but that was a conservative estimate of, of how we thought we could tighten up without impacting the educational delivery.
You said five to six million?
Yes.
Okay. How about parking? How does that come into play? Like, if you're overparked by 100 parking spaces, it looks like it's surface parking in any way, supposed to structure.
$7,500 of that spot, I think, you know, so.
And you wouldn't spread out the campus anymore, so really, you would just basically keep what you got there, and that would be greenfields if you didn't have as much parking?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, so that's not a substantial savings either?
And again, there's 2,000 parking spaces just to the northeast of this campus.
Yeah, we're not, and I'm not pushing for more parking, I'm pushing for less, but I'd like to know the savings. It doesn't sound like it's much according to your.
No, I, I, it all depends on how you look at it. 100 spaces, you know, adds up. It's not millions, but, you know, it all starts to impact the bottom line.
Okay. And when you broke off the 10 acres for development, so 10 acres include the, the road acreage as well? Like, in other words, is it all 10 acres? It's not quote, 10 acres of commercial development, maybe eight acres of commercial development with two acres of roads in between, is that right?
It doesn't include the public space, you know, within that footprint, yes. So sidewalks, roads, yeah.
But roads as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And we were flipping it back, and, you know, if you look at the diagram, you know, the line crosses the street depending upon, you know, who owns school street, you know, as well, so.
Okay. And your plan seems dependent, or highly dependent, on the, the street coming in off of Route 7. Is that fair to say, or would it all work, would things work without the access from Route 7, kind of at school street, or whatever you might want to call that, ingress, egress?
Well, there's an existing curb cut, plus or minus, where, you know, if you were to look at the schools, the community school, you know, right there now, so, you know, there's sort of a natural inclination to want to enter the site there. And, you know, the other existing entry point, you know, has a, a strong logic to it as well, so I would think you would end up with, you know, connections at those points that would, through a desire line, end up at the front door of the, the school, so.
I think we'd want it to. Unfortunately, we're, it's not totally within our hands, some of those decisions are up to VDOT and other, you know, third parties, so.
Sure, but these are plus or minus existing curb cut locations.
Okay. Well, I tell you, I'm sure we all have a lot of other questions and comments, but we do have another project that's waiting out in the hall, and so, unless there's anything else at this point, sure, Vice Mayor Conley.
Mr. Shields, I'm just wondering about timeline and decision-making. Now, we have a, an aggressive timeline here. So what do, what does council need to do next? Or what does the school board need to do next to move us forward? Just wait till the June 16th meeting?
We'll get this presentation again and community feedback on Saturday. We can discuss about at your next regular meeting, whether we could try to have part of that meeting be to advance this discussion, but the work session is when we're trying to gear sort of the, of the different streams of information, of trying to hit that 16th is the next time of some new, new information that we would, would come to the council with on the financing side.
Okay, so we'll have new information June 16th, and then, if we decide to go forward right now with a referendum, will it be June 24th, June 23rd?
26th.
26th?
That's right.
Okay. Would be a meeting.
Yes, so it's June 19th is the date, I'm sorry.
Okay.
In terms of the next work session.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, unless there's anything else pressing to be said, thank you all for a wonderful presentation. I know the community looks forward to further dialogue, which will be on Saturday, and the school board as well. Good to see you guys. And let's take a five-minute break before we get our planning commissioners in here, if we could, but thanks for, thanks everybody.
Thank you very much.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and get started if we can? If you all could please have your seats, and let's get started with the rest of our hearing. Thank you all, thank you to our folks from Insight for coming back to see us this evening. We also are delighted to have our planning commission colleagues with us, and so, I don't know if you want to do introductions, we could start with introductions, but Mr. Wadiska, thank you for coming this evening as the chair.
Thank you. In terms of introductions, you mean the?
Folks, I don't know if.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm ready to get on, get on with the presentation. I'm the chair, Russell Wadiska.
We don't have name tags, so I am Tim Stevens.
Melissa Dietz.
Brent Krasner.
Lindy Hockenberry.
Andy Rankin.
Okay, great, you want to just quickly go around the other side of the table, and then we'll get on with the presentation. Letty Hardy, Karen Oliver. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Wyatt Shields.
Akita Ruzi with planning.
Letty Hardy, Karen Oliver, Dave Snyder. Mary Beth Conley, Dave Tarter, Dan Z, Phil Duncan.
I'm glad you know everybody.
Yeah, we want to make sure everybody, particularly our guests from Insight today. But, Mr. Shields, do you have any preparatory remarks or anything staff would like to say before we get on to the presentation of the developer?
Well, here's what we would, thank you, Mayor Tarter. What we, we would propose is if Ms. Ruzi could just provide an overview of the application that's before the council in terms of the, what the requested actions are, a proposed schedule for considering those. That'll take about five minutes, and then we turn it over to the developer team for their presentation. Mr. Golf would then provide an overview of the fiscal impact analysis that's been done, and then Q and A. If that order of business is satisfactory, we'll go from that. And I'll just say, just very briefly, in opening, at the last work session that the city council had with the Insight team, the council did have, I think, some very sharply-focused comments relating to the density on the Lawton side of the project, shifting that to Broad Street, stronger placemaking, shared parking, strong retail program with commitments to that retail program, diversity of housing, and those were some of the, the high-level points that were made at that last work session. So tonight's really is a reporting back in terms of progress that's been made in that area. Let me turn it over to Ms. Ruzi for an overview of the requested actions.
Good evening, Akita with planning. So the developers team is here today to present the fourth submission tonight. That was actually recently submitted on May 26th. Staff has not reviewed the fourth submission. That review will occur in the coming weeks, so the staff report before you only speaks to the third submission. So I'll keep the overview very brief, since we're going to hear the presentation on the fourth submission. The proposed project includes six-story office use, six-story residential apartments, ground-floor retail, a performance arts use, and one-story above ground parking with two levels of underground parking. The development applications entail a comprehensive plan map amendment to change the entire site from business and transitional to mixed-use designation, the rezoning of one parcel from transitional to B2, and two special exceptions are being sought. The first one is residential development within mixed-use development, the second special exception for height bonus of up to 15 feet. Some of the notable changes from previous submissions in submission one and two and submission three, with the submission three, proposed grocery store is removed, office square footage is doubled, city-owned land and parking lot is no longer included, site land area is reduced from 3.16 acres to 2.68 acres, a performance arts user is added, and the ratio of a commercial to residential use is currently at 23.8% to 76.2%. Previously, it was 24.7% to 75.3%. Number of loading bays reduced from five to two and placed inside of the project. The reduced height and increased setbacks along Lawton Street are offered with the submission, and elevated courtyards, balcony, and rooftop amenities are also offered. The third submission has made some significant improvements, including office square footage that's doubled and relocated to corner of Broad and Washington, community theater use is added, loading space internalized, reduced height on Lawton, as we just talked about, increased setbacks on Lawton and along portion of the north elevation abutting in our district, and added, the added breaks in the massing along East Broad Street with upper-story terraces. As the project moves forward, there are a number of issues that the staff review has outlined for this third submission, and I'll just briefly go over those. It's connectivity with adjacent commercial uses, public access, commercial density, streetscape design, on-street parking on Broad, massing design and architecture, height setbacks and step backs, Lawton Street impacts, voluntary concessions, shared parking analysis and requests of reduction, rezoning and comprehensive plan map amendment review, special exceptions review, and transportation demand management plan. In terms of the next steps, a tentative schedule is provided in the staff report, if you look on page 16. If the council decides to put the item on the June 12th agenda for first reading with the intent to refer the fourth submission out to boards and commissions, staff review of the fourth submission can occur concurrently with that boards and review commission, uh, boards and commission review. At that point, a second reading then is possible on October 10th of 2017. And that really is an overview of the staff report that's before you on the third submission.
So you haven't analyzed the most recent changes?
Not the fourth submission, no. That was submitted on May 26th, and staff hasn't had sufficient time to look at that.
Yeah, I mean, I wish we knew, and I don't, I'm not sure this is really efficient use of everyone's time to have a, you know, public meeting on something that hasn't been fully vetted and reviewed by staff, and we're all here tonight, but I think going forward, it would be appropriate to make sure that we've had a chance to fully analyze, vet the changes that have been made, so that we can have a useful dialogue.
And since we're on the schedule, it seems to me that's pretty aggressive to give the neighborhood and others an opportunity to really understand what it is that's now being proposed with any changes, so, anyway, we, we can get to the specifics later, but that seems to me a timetable that doesn't work real well.
So why don't we turn it on to the developer? I would ask maybe if you could focus on the changes in particular that you all have made. We have heard this case a couple weeks ago, and, but I think the particular thing of importance would be what's changed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we'll do just that. Let me make some brief introductions on our end of the table. I think most of you know me, Greg Regal from Maguire Woods. To my left, Rick Housler from Insight, Maury Stern from Insight, and Jim Volski from MVNA Architects. You'll be hearing from the four of us in varying shapes and forms, and we've got some other participants in the process I won't introduce if you have very specific questions about specific. about specific topics. And let me start by saying, we do owe an ongoing debt of thanks to the city staff and the city in general. We've done a lot since we were last here. Certainly, staff's been very valuable with their time. We've had a number of meetings, and I think you'll see very legitimate progress in what we're going to share with you tonight. The first picture we put up in this presentation is always a good starting point. I think it's an important reminder of the prominence of this corner, and frankly, really gets at the heart of what staff referred to as the third revision, which in its simplest form was the commitment to Class A office of a size and type unlike anything in the city, and you see it pictured there very prominently. I'd also remind the council and the commission, we've also made a parallel commitment to find a permanent home for creative cauldron. Two things I think are very distinguishing elements of this application, and of course, you see a quick refresher on the collective commitment to quality, animation, great urban design, and so forth. So with that, how have we spent the last time? We've responded to these issues, which I think are fairly stated, the issues that the council raised. I won't read them all, but certainly, we've been very mindful of your constructive feedback on Lawton Street. You're going to see how we have reduced the density and the magnitude there, transferred it toward the front of the building. In the fourth submission the staff referenced, there is an option now to even increase the office square footage if the market will bear that, which I respectfully would suggest is positive for a lot of reasons, fiscally and in terms of just animating the downtown. And we spent a lot of time on the functionality in terms of how this project relates to the city lot, how it relates to existing uses, and the collective sort of placemaking things that Mr. Shields referenced up front. So a lot of work in a short amount of time, and I'm going to turn it to Jim Volski, who will take you through some of the design aspects, I believe, starting with the Lawton side.
Do you have a clicker to make the slides change?
I've got it right here.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody, I'm Jim Volski with MVNA Architects. Neville Fernandez from my offices here as well, and he may be answering some of your questions and handle some of the presentation too. But we'll start with the Lawton Street frontage and the changes that have been made through the, through the progress on the project. And what you can see here, we really tried to make this as easy and as graphic as possible. What you can see in the sort of red line at the, at the tallest building, that was the original submission of the project, stepping down from that, you can see the March 2017 submission, and then changes that we've made since March, where you can see we've removed the fourth floor of the residential for a significant portion along Lawton Street, as well as pulled it back a little bit from the, I guess that's the northeast property line. I don't know if this was discussed in the last work session, but there were other changes architecturally along this facade, where we've eliminated any sort of view corridors into the, into the parking and created more of a stone landscape wall. We've also pulled the project off of Lawton Street, set, increased the setbacks both of off of Lawton Street and off of the residence to the northeast. So, we go to the next one. This is a planned view, and if we want to jump back and forth when we have questions, we can do that. But you can see, again, at the top floor of the project where the whole corner has been basically cut out and pulled back to the corridor, it does stay out where the egress stair is, and as you get closer to Broad Street, but what we're trying to do is create a diversity in the scale of the architecture there that starts to break it down into forms that are a little bit more in keeping with some of the larger single-family forms as you, as you go down Lawton Street. That section is actually taken through the back of the project, and you can see the existing brick wall that's there, as well as the setbacks, and how the building, as you get upstairs, sets back over 40 feet off of the property line. And we'll talk a little bit more when we talk about public space, but one that gets ignored is, within that setback, is actually a pedestrian connection between Lawton Street and Park Place, and a little linear park that sort of will allow you to sort of traverse the project in the back. These are some different views. I think this view is, actually starts to capture that kind of diversity of scale that I was talking about in the architecture. The actual retail plan at the first floor level does extend out to the setback at Lawton Street at the corner to sort of signify that corner, but we keep it down at one story to break the scale way down and to start to build this, as you head towards the west, the scale steps up, and you can see that in the project, but as you head up Lawton Street, the scale steps down. And the primary scale on Lawton Street is really the three-story red brick form that you see. That captures sort of a residential scale and really just a kind of an urban townhouse scale. The top floor, as you get towards a single-family house on Lawton disappears, you can see that, so that's only out at Broad and, at Lawton and Broad to announce the corner. And then you can also see how the landscaping steps back and how the building steps back along the sidewalk as you continue to head into Lawton Street. This is a picture of, some of the original submissions actually had a facade sort of pretty much out much closer to the sidewalk. In this case, once you get past that little retail corner where the cauldron theater is, it steps way back to create a pretty intensely landscaped zone that is sort of bordered on the back by what we envision as more of a stone landscape wall, but is actually the wall that's screening the garage behind. And then that kind of three-story more urban townhouse form sitting on that plinth of stone, and then the top floor completely eliminated in this submission to break the scale down. You can also start to see, yeah, this is a great picture, as you come up Lawton Street, you can see the building is set back considerably, like I said, over 40 feet from the property line and that existing brick wall. There is a kind of a linear park pedestrian connection that can connect Lawton through to Park Place and to the city parking lot. But again, we tried to use that same stone kind of landscape plinth to sort of turn the corner and return, and then we purposely kind of came in with a much more domestic form. There's a little section of garage that peaks out here, set way back off of Lawton, that we're just putting a little slope roof form on and kind of hiding that down. It's almost like a shed leaned to on the back of the building. Some of the things that you'll see when we talk about the facades facing the city parking lot, which you can start to see hinted at here, is that that taller corner in the background on the right side has been reduced from the last submission as well to start to address some of the architecture facing the city parking lot. This is a view if you're walking towards Broad Street or driving on Lawton Street. I think you can start to see some of the impact of some of these scale-making elements that we've put in, so the landscaping against that stone plinth to kind of just create, you know, basically something that's of the earth, we use the term, but it's basically things that are part of the earth and not necessarily part of the building. You can see the existing seven-foot-high masonry wall and how that actually is taller than a lot of the things that we're actually planning to put in there. And then you can see the scale of the three-story brick residential form, again, repeating sort of more of an urban townhouse form, starting to relate it more to the single-family houses. You can also see the, if you can go back, the, that much more of the sky and the horizon that's visible now that the top floor has been cut back at that corner. I don't know if we want to go through this, or do questions at the end, or do them as we're talking.
Let's do questions at the end and go through it.
The next thing that we wanted to talk about was the connection of the, of the parking in the project to the city lot behind. So what you're looking at here is you are inside the garage at the street level. If you look up at the upper right-hand corner, there's a little key plant, and that kind of is a little white arrow, and that white arrow is the view that you're seeing. And so you can start to see here, the actual elevation of the garage is below the existing city lot and below the open space behind Claren Don's and the other restaurant. What we're doing here is opening the garage up for full transparency, connecting those two visually, and then providing pedestrian connections that allow you to sort of come in, take those steps up, and go across that back lot. This is looking at that same thing. You can start to see in the openings up to the garage, hints of the state theater building as well as Claren Don's. You can see how the garage comes in and actually is, is below Washington Boulevard, where you see those two cars and the white headache bar, that's the entrance and exit off of Washington Boulevard. So you can see, if you're a pedestrian and you're parking in this garage, but using one of those other adjacent neighbors, you can come in and you can take those steps and walk straight out to Washington Street, or you can take those steps and sort of loop back and get into the public lot behind Claren Don's. This is a, an area where I think we've made some of the most significant changes, I think rightly so. The city was commenting on the challenges of the architecture on the north facade facing the city parking lot, and this is always tricky because it's a, it's a zero-lot line condition. We don't, you may build something there in a year, you may never build anything there. And also is, you know, basically, some views of our building that I think are going to be seen from different parts of Falls Church, and so we worked very hard to basically design this and use what we can here to create something that looks like an appropriate back of a building. I'm a huge advocate of hierarchy and facades. Buildings have fronts and backs and sides, and they deserve different treatments to sort of create visual clues as to what's there. So what we've tried to do here is, is design a very attractive sort of, you know, building facing the city parking lot, but still making it clear that it's, you know, it's the backside of the project and the hierarchy of the project is in the other parts. And what we've done is, starting by basically working with, I think, tools and language that's a little bit more true to architectural, or has a little bit more architectural integrity. So if you look on the top, that's where we started in the last submission, and then I'm going to start at the right side. The office building, for all intents and purposes, stays the same, but now moving to my left from the office building, or moving left on the screen from the office building, you can start to see the openings that have been, much larger openings into the garage at the, underneath those two trees. That's what you were looking at earlier on the last slides when you were in the garage looking out. And then a very big change to the left of that, and what we've done is, on the upper screen where you see kind of the Audrey Hepburn screen and the Arts District graphic, that whole part of the project has been pulled in so that we're able to have apartments with windows, full windows that can stay there forever. So that's, that's been pulled in, and what I think that does is it's already, it's basically reduced the size of this elevation by about 20%, and it's allowed us to activate a facade with the same materials, the same windows, the same balconies, it's activating the other residential facades. Moving over to the left from that, you know, a little bit to that left of that dash line where it says city lot and restaurants, you know, the city lot side is now where the property line is where the city lot starts. And what we've done is, as opposed to having the building appear like a large six-story building on top of a rather reduced plinth, we've increased the height of the plinth to create a base that I think is more appropriate to this size of building. And so it's now basically a five-story building on a, on a one-story plinth, and we see that plinth is, that's the area that I think most people will interact with, or most people will sort of relate to. That's where they can touch, that's where they can see. And so where you see that whole hatched area where it says potential area for mural along city lot, it's just that. We're envisioning basically a simple masonry wall that can be painted on or added to, create all sorts of different kinds of graphics or murals, but doing them down at a scale that you'd appreciate them from your car, you'd appreciate them as a, as a pedestrian, but to sort of activate that zone of the project. And then stepping up in the building, whereas before we kind of had a more of a graphic pattern, we're now basically recessing a segment of that building. That whole red segment in the middle there is recessed and is, is materials that are evocative of the masonry on the front of the building, putting in sort of Juliet balconies to activate it a little bit, and then windows along in the corridor there, and then on either side of that, looking more like residential wings right out at the property line of the two gray zones. And then as you move left from there, on the upper form, you can see sort of a much taller tower form that was on the corner that I think was potentially impacting Lawton Street a little bit as well. And what we've done there is, now that we're on our setback and not on the city lot, we have the opportunity to do more windows, so we're trying to create as much transparency and as many windows as we can, all the way to where you see that stair tower. And then we're using that stair tower as kind of a vertical element to sort of help organize the overall facade. I'm very happy with where this is going. I think it's made a tremendous difference from where it was. I want to point out that the windows are something that will be worked out with the fire marshal and the code. We call them at-risk windows in the sense that obviously if you guys build something or somebody builds something there, those windows just get blocked up because they're right on the property line. But for the whole time that there's nothing there, those windows have window treatments in them, they're all into corridors in the buildings, so you'll see activity and people walking back and forth. You'll see light coming out of them at night, but they don't really, I think, create any privacy issues in the sense that you're not looking into somebody's unit and nobody's in their unit looking out at the houses. These are just some closer graphic images to sort of tell the story a little bit better. So again, in the lower right-hand corner where you see those two people in front of the glass under the screen, that's the new kind of transparent entrances connecting the garage and to the city lot. To the left of that, where you see the balconies, that's the whole part of the building that has been pulled off of the property line to reduce the mass of the north facade and to allow openings that sort of reflect, and materials that all reflect the same materials that are on the side in the front of the building. To the left of that, you can start to see a, the plinth, the one-story base, that a tall one-story base that I was referencing with different options to kind of create public art or murals or something else to kind of activate that zone when you're in your car or you're a pedestrian. And then above that, you can start to see the different materials, the pink on the left, the gray on the right, and the different, slight different planes that we're trying to create to get some shadows on the back facade.
So before you move off that, those panels on the lower left there are the more eye level or person-level.
Absolutely, yeah.
Art panels that are potential, that, that is the revised rear elevation of the building that you see there.
Yes, sir.
And one more thing, if you are, if you see the, where those two people are standing in, in black suits, if you walk through there.
Down to the garage, yeah.
There's a door on West Broad Street, on East Broad Street that you reach egress from East Broad, or ingress from East Broad Street.
Yeah.
Or.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, very important point. Well, if you go in that, where those two folks are, and you go down, you can walk right across the garage and exit on the Broad Street.
That, that was one of the.
Kind of connected to the retail down there.
That's one of the things we tried hardest to do, is create a pedestrian way through the garage, which was discussed last time. And this does that, and I think the interior of the garage is relatively user-friendly from a visual standpoint.
Sure, it's very tall ones, because it's the height of the retail, it's a very tall garage experience. Great, yeah, these are just some examples of different types of art options or mural options. Again, these, these are a little bit more ambitious in that they're covering whole facades. We're taking a different approach where we're basically trying to, to do something to activate at the street level and provide options, but, but not necessarily take over the architecture of the building. This is a, I think, a very telling view from, right from Park Place and Washington Street. You can see Claren Don's there. I think the really thing to see here is if you can look at the corner of the residential building, everything from their back about 40 feet was originally, again, just solid blank wall. By pulling that off the property line, we're able to kind of activate that, create a corner of apartment, activate the, activate it at the plinth with the private terrace, and then create little Juliet terraces up above. And then you can also see how the materiality of the building is turning into kind of two gray wings with that pink wing in the middle, and then the scale of the, the public artwork and the one-story plinth tied down at the ground level where you see all that other activity, the storefronts and the signage and the awnings and the, the activity around Claren Don's.
Maury, you want to talk parking?
Sure, I'm Maury Stern with Insight Property Group. Just want to spend a few minutes talking about how the parking operates. That was a question that came up in the last meeting. So the parking that we're supplying is, at the peak of the project, the number of spaces that the uses in the project would need, but that peak is, is at one point in a week. And so in those points where there aren't huge demand for, say, the office at night when office workers are at home, the office spaces aren't used, those spaces become available for the public or users of our project to park. We do anticipate charging for parking some, some amount to control the lot and not have it just be a pure public lot, and possibly likely provide validation for the businesses that are in our property, but charge a nominal amount for people who are not coming to the businesses in our property. But there is a significant number of spaces that are available at various times during the day and night, above and beyond what the project itself needs, especially after hours when the office is, is less utilized. Next one. The other topic that we talked about a little bit last time, that we probably didn't do as good of a job articulating in the previous submission, is, is the public spaces within the project. So this is a list here of, of the public spaces. We're calling them innovative, they're not your, what you traditionally would see as outdoor public spaces, but we have a mix of outdoor and indoor, public and private, and we'll go through the list in more detail, but, but high-level creative cauldron at the corner is really a community amenity in and of itself, but also we plan on, or they plan on allowing the public to use the theater and the spaces when they're not having performances or is not being used for other, other creative cauldron uses, and allow the city or public to rent those spaces and use them for meetings. We have now a public-private residential lobby that's connected to creative cauldron, and we'll go into a little more detail to explain what that looks like in a minute. In the center here of this picture is the courtyard between the office building and the residential building. It's about a, what, 10,000-square-foot courtyard? We've put a movie screen on that courtyard. We envision public events, you know, maybe weekly or monthly movie nights in the summer, summer concert series, and also envision potentially people buying lunch from one of our restaurants, walking through the office lobby and using this courtyard to sit down and have a lunch. We envision it being sort of managed in a way, because it is an office building, but allowing the public to use that courtyard at various times during the day and night. And then we'll get into more detail on the office rooftop terrace, we talked about that a little bit last time. And then the public spaces around the site, the arcade where the restaurants have outdoor seating that's on private property, but we already set the building further back to allow for outdoor seating, enhancing the streetscape, and then the pedestrian pathway, we talked about it a few minutes ago. So getting into a little more detail, this might be hard to explain without pointing, and it's a smaller graphic at the top, but this, to the left in yellow is the residential lobby, to the right in red is the creative cauldron space. And I don't know if you can see in these, on the screens, but ... visible? Oops.
Yeah, I want to show up. Yeah.
Well, we'll talk through it and then we can explain better during Q and A. But the box office for Creative Cauldron will face into the residential lobby. So the concept is that the space, there's some tiered seating going up to the same level as the Creative Cauldron space. Patrons will come into the residential lobby, get their ticket from the box office, they can hang out in the lobby, they could get drinks and intermission in the lobby, interact with the spaces in the lobby, and then go into the performance of Creative Cauldron. And then when Creative Cauldron isn't having a performance, that space will also be open to the public, similar to the picture, precedent picture below, with seating for people to work, to have meetings, to gather, and intermix with the residents of our building. These are some precedent images that show the types of spaces we're talking about, the seats on the tiered seating in the bottom center picture in the upper right, but to give you a sense of the type of space we're talking about. I mentioned earlier the courtyard between the office and the residential. The top picture is a section through the office lobby showing the stairs as you come into the office lobby and walk up to the courtyard. So for these movie nights or concert nights, or if someone wanted to buy lunch at the restaurant and walk up to the courtyard, this is how they would access that courtyard between the office and the residential building. And then a view looking back across Broad Street into this courtyard, it's very wide, big courtyard with lots of trees and should be a really nice space for both public events and more small gathering spaces.
To hold that slide for a second, just talking about our concept of trying to put feet on the street and create public gathering spaces that they've, they're adding up here. And just to think about what I think of an acre of public gathering spaces, there's about a quarter acre on that raised plaza. There's a quarter acre, I want to think of the restaurants and of their on-street dining. We had pulled the building back from the building restriction line to create a public space, a wider public space in front of the sidewalks. We have a rooftop terrace, as you know, for public events on top of the office building, and a 10,000-feet of public access gathering space along with the creative cauldron, along with our own lobby. For those of you that might have made a trip to the Apollo, which is one of our projects downtown, you'll see an example of a lobby of a public, of an apartment building that has become kind of a public gathering space by design with a cafe, a commercial cafe that feeds into the lobby, and people come and go there all the time. We're happy if they find their way there and rent an apartment, but they might just find their way there and sit down, read newspaper, and drink the cup of coffee from the adjoining cafe. The idea to create circulation, feet on the street, public gathering spaces, and we think the energy that comes from these interacting uses, offices, restaurants, performances, and just people hanging out, as well as people behind the building on the plaza, that is Park Place. We think we have a real chance to create a source of energy and activity and animation at the focus on this really important corner.
Rick mentioned the rooftop on top of the office building. The top picture is a rendering of that outdoor space, looking back towards Broad Street, Washington Street being on your right, Broad Street being straight ahead. Again, a concept of how that space could function, be used for events. It's an amenity to the office building, but also where we envision public events, city events happening on the rooftop there. And then again, some precedent images on the bottom of the types of landscaping and materials we would use on that space. And then lastly, switching gears a little bit, we talked last time about retail and place making and our concept for the ground floor of the building. The top rendering is on Washington Street with
The Beach Shack and Argia's to your far left.
Sorry, am I
The middle one.
No, sorry. Middle, sorry, middle one. Beach Shack and Argia's to your far left, our first restaurant space next to Argia's, the office lobby in the middle of the picture with the 100 above it, the address, and then a big corner restaurant at the corner of Broad and Washington. So the concept here is with the State Theater sort of anchoring the northern edge there, the existing restaurants, another restaurant of ours, and the office lobby plus a big corner restaurant. This is really the kind of entertainment focus, really heavy, high-traffic retail uses that connect to the existing uses along Washington. And then turning the corner, sorry, just back to the top picture, you then have the Broad Street front of the restaurant, and then what we're calling sort of urban streetscape retail. And the concept there is local, community-serving, highly curated uses. We're not able to tell you today what those exact uses are, but going back to the Apollo that Rick mentioned, we developed the strategy at the Apollo and really spent a lot of time making sure that the uses we put in the building were not just what you see in every other project, not just big box stores. They're uses that the neighborhood wants, they're local, and they fit the mix of other uses in the building. So we're going to spend that same amount of time, it takes a lot of time. All retail takes a lot of time, but this curated retail takes an inordinate amount of time, and that's the amount of time we anticipate spending to get the right mix here. But we're not able yet, at this point in the project, to tell you what those specific uses would be. It's just too early in the process to start talking to those types of retailers.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Before you leave the screen, we've talked about the transparency of the garage and to picture it. If you see the raised plaza with the two cherry trees, and below the left-hand cherry tree is the entrance off of Broad Street where you would walk through the garage in that scene that you've seen another picture of, of the interior, and come out on the other side in Park Street behind the building. That's been a big, a question that's asked of us, to make sure that we have pedestrian passageway through there. And with that, you could walk through the building and walk all the way around the restaurants because you could walk through the building, come out of Park Street, go out, walk down North Washington Street. That's a totally transparent corner. We think that sort of introduces a swirl of activity around the corner with the ability to walk through there like that.
And then just start, lastly, before you move off, Greg, the Creative Cauldron obviously anchors the far eastern edge, so that we think it's a nice connection of the activity along Washington Street, turning the corner with the retail, little more smaller-scale, local curated retail in the middle, the residential lobby, and then anchored on the east end with Creative Cauldron.
We think that as a matter of creating activity around the restaurants, we think that Creative Cauldron, in addition to, we love the arts and we love the, what they've done with their ability to create great performances, that also puts feet on the street, creates demand for restaurants. You count 100 people, that, maybe 99 people that are attending one of their performances in the evening, you're going to capture a fairly large number of those people who are already parked, that are going to buy a meal at one of those restaurants, and it's within easy walking distance. We've created a very wide sidewalk. If you look at the scale drawings, a very wide sidewalk along, all along our Broad Street frontage, which is itself kind of a public space. So we think that the Creative Cauldron, in addition to great performances, is going to create the kind of activity for people that are going to make those restaurants succeed and create the, as we say, feet on the street.
Yeah. I'm going to just add to what Rick said, because I think, and you can kind of see it in this picture, but if you can go back one slide, Greg, because I think it's an important point. And we're going to revise this, I think, on the North Washington Street retail scape to add to State Theater, because one of the things you really have going on here is probably the simplest diagram of all, which is a barbell diagram of kind of creative uses anchoring, you know, the streetscape. One, the State Theater on Washington Street, a continuous active edge all along of restaurants and storefronts, and then Creative Cauldron on Broad Street at a point
If you, to that point, if you look at some of other drawings, you'll see that actually if the whole picture was drawn with a background, you'd see the State Theater behind those cherry trees. That plaza is positioned, the building, the side of the State Theater building is visible across that plaza through the transparency that's created by that interruption in the building.
Well, and Jim's point is a great point to end on, because this is the art entertainment's district, so the notion of that linkage and that barbell effect, I think, is a great point to end on.
You can see the State Theater right on the left-hand side of that picture
Yeah.
Looking from, looking up Washington Street, but if you looked through, across the raised plaza, you'd also see it from that direction. Connection that unites the arts district.
So we will respectfully stop there.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Why don't we turn the lights on, if you don't mind, and maybe we'll go to questions and comments. Maybe we'll start with the planning commission. Mr. Wadyska?
We're going to just have a quick discussion of the fiscal impact.
Oh, okay, that's right. Go ahead. Is Mr. Goff here for that? Oh, there you are. All right.
So the information I'll summarize is briefly, that I will summarize briefly, is found in attachment four of the staff report. It's labeled fiscal impact analysis. But we estimate the probable range of net revenue for the project at between $417,000 and $962,000 per year at a point where the buildings are fully occupied. The reason for presenting the results in a range of outcomes is that on the revenue side, we've made various assumptions for the nature of business activity in the commercial space. In other words, we've looked at the projected tax revenue results if a certain amount of space is occupied by restaurants, and we've looked at several scenarios for space occupied by retail that generates sales versus retail that is service retail and does not. On the expense side, we've set a range for the likely number of public school pupils, which is consistent with pupil populations in our database of some 700 apartments and mixed-use buildings in the city. That sets one end of the range. That figure computes to 48 pupils. For the higher end of possible expenses, we looked at what would occur if there are 50% more pupils than our data would otherwise imply, which is 72 pupils. Gross revenue for the project, and again, we measured this at full occupancy, is estimated between $2,289,000 and $2,397,000 per year. And keep in mind that the city's fiscal impact model reflects expenses that are modeled to show full cost to the city, whether they're actualized in future budgets or not. These would be costs required to maintain a consistent level of service over time in response to population growth and other impacts from new development. We also looked at net revenue generated by existing land uses on the 2.7-acre site. That's about $64,000 a year today. So a net-net revenue range for the new development is estimated at $353,000 to $898,000 per year. Another data point of interest, especially for a project like Broad and Washington, which has a significant office component, is $60,000 per year in additional economic impact. This is a conservative estimate of the indirect tax revenue from employee and resident spending inside the city by those working or living in the Broad and Washington buildings. Economic impact is measured separately from fiscal impact in our report, using a new software module that our consultants created. City Council's Economic Development Committee asked about the effect on fiscal impact outcomes if the retail space in the development remains entirely vacant for any period of time. City business tax revenues for this space, we believe, would range between $195,000 and $360,000 per year, again, depending on the final mix of restaurant and retail occupants in the building. So stated another way, totally empty retail and restaurant space in the Broad and Washington project would result in net revenue ranging from $222,000 a year to $602,000 per year. Gross revenue under those circumstances would fall in a range, we believe, of $2 million to $2.1 million a year. That concludes my report on fiscal impact.
Thank you very much. Why don't we go on now to the planning commission? Mr. Wadyska?
Thank you very much. I have a couple of questions, but I'm going to turn it over to my other commissioners and let them start with what they'd like. Mrs. Hockenberry, would you like to begin?
Not ready. I passed for at least one minute.
No problem. Anybody else want to step up, or should I go?
Well, my first question is for Mr. Goff. I was a little bit surprised to see that the rate for pupil per unit is 1.017 for three-bedroom apartments. And so that's based on comparables at the Pearson, which is, I think, the only place we have three bedrooms being rented.
Yeah, we don't actually, I might invite Becky Whitman up here, who's our staff expert on units in projects like that. But I don't believe we have any actual three-bedroom units.
Those are two-bedroom dens.
What we have, what we have is three bedrooms and dens, we have two bedrooms and dens. So we had to kind of do something in between our experience in units like that around the city. So that's the number we came up with. It was kind of a midpoint in a range of a product we don't even actually have out there.
No, I was just curious, because I do know a lot of people in the two-bedroom dens and the Pearson, and it's definitely not a 1.017 pupil ratio that I've seen. But, you know, I just think, and you don't have to answer it now.
Becky might have.
I would just say, and I'd just like to see the numbers back in that, because it just didn't seem possible to me. Questions on this side of it? I guess the number-one thing I'm concerned about is filling this retail and the office space, because I know, I work in Old Town, I'm seeing the Carlisle, which has been open for a long time, still full of empty retail space, and Eisenhower, which is being rebuilt, really only has good restaurants right where the AMC Theater is as an anchor. And so you guys don't really have an anchor here. I know you were saying the State Theater's kind of an anchor and Creative Cauldron's kind of an anchor, but, you know, considering the struggles that we're having with our Lincoln project down the road, who lost their grocery store, which was, would have been an anchor for them, I'm just like really, and also on the commercial side, we're seeing a lot of vacancies, you know, telecommuting, different types of office styles are really bringing down that office market. And so, you know, so I'm concerned about what your retail strategy is here without a really strong retail anchor in there. And my other problem on the office side of it is, you know, the current office has quite a bit of professional people in it, which is really the only office that's easy to get now, which is doctors and dentists and stuff like that. So this new office, is that really going to, would it totally price out the current tenants? I mean, are we going to be able to keep any of those tenants, or how are we going to find new ones?
Good point.
Can start with the office question. So the pricing will certainly be different. We're designing it to be true Class A office space, and the hope is to get full-floor users, but the pricing will not be so significantly higher than what some of the existing tenants pay, is that they'd be completely priced out.
Okay.
And we get a lot, I know there is a lot of vacancy in our building now, but it's a lot of it's due to the known development coming. We get a lot of, I get inquiries probably every week from 5,000 to 50,000-square-foot tenants who would like to be there if there were longer-term possibilities. So really, we really think there is a market for, we know there's a market for the smaller tenants, we really do think there's an untapped market for the larger tenants up to full-floor or a couple-floor tenants, but there isn't anything comparable in Falls Church for those people to go to. So that's maybe a short answer to your office question. On the retail front, I mean, well, why, retail's hard. It's not, it's not an easy business, but we wholeheartedly believe we don't need a retail anchor to attract the type of retailers we're talking about. There's enough activity, there's enough other things going on in the downtown area, bringing Creative Cauldron to sort of bookend that other end, that we are very confident that we can attract retailers. I can't promise you that the day we open, every single retail bay will be filled, because it does take time, but we don't think that's a detriment. We don't think there's any risk that we, if we don't get rent from that retail, that really hurts our financial situation in the project. And so we feel very confident that we can get tenants at the rent we want and the types of users that we in the city want.
Just to sort of add to what Maury said, there's a lot of difference in a downtown area between one corner and another.
Right.
We think our anchor, our anchor is downtown Falls Church, Broad and Washington, and we think we're going to be, also be an anchor for downtown Falls Church and Broad and Washington. We're here because we believe and we know some of the history, and I personally have experienced the history of what's been seen in the downtown over the last 30 years. We think we have an anchor for downtown and that downtown think we have an anchor for downtown, and that downtown is our anchor. We believe that if you can walk to so many places within 100 yards of where your building and your corner is, that we start with something very, very powerful. We also are aware that a million and a half cars drive through that intersection every month. Some of them have more than one person in them. That's a lot of eyeballs on our corner. And we, so we think that we have something very, very special in terms of this geography, and we're gonna do everything we can to animate it and make it powerful. That's a very, very, we never should be, we never should understate the power of what we have and what the city of Falls Church has in this corner. And we're gonna do everything we can to animate that. I think that, it's just not, everyone loves their own real estate, of course. But, that is a historic corner with historic capability, and we're not gonna underuse it. And if we treat it properly, I think we're all gonna surprise ourselves.
I want to add to that as well. We get involved in these projects, we do mixed-use from the ground up. We're retail architects that do good multifamily, not the other way around. And I wholeheartedly agree with what Rick said about the power of this location. So, we're not fighting the location battle pretty much on any front to start with. And what Neville and I do, and the rest of the folks at my firm do, is really try and take hurdles away from viable retail and successful retail. And what you'll have here when we're done, well, I want to start with the fact that it, all in all, it's actually a fairly modest retail program. I don't see it overly aggressive. Two, again, we've tried to take any hurdles to success away. This retail is, for all intents and purposes, surface-parked. You don't have to go down a ramp or up a ramp. You don't have to get into an elevator. It follows kind of a classic Main Street retail program, you know, that happens all over this country. Not so much in Falls Church originally, but plenty of other places where basically you just park behind the store and then you walk out. And that, I think, alone separates us from a lot of other mixed-use projects that maybe you've seen. You know, this is, this is very easy to use, and it's not teaser parking. Basically, the bulk of the retail parking is right there. It's no different than the way Clarendon's and the restaurant and the State Theater survive with the city lot behind it. You know, it's a very simple park-your-car in a very well-lit, very tall garage, and walk 100 feet or 200 feet to the different storefronts. So, again, we worked to take those hurdles away, you know, to avoid the mistakes that we've seen in projects. And I don't see any hurdles to the retail success here from a planning and design perspective.
Anyone else?
Changing gears a little bit.
I can wait till after Mr. Stevens.
You have more?
I'll make sure you get a microphone.
Mine'll be quick. I was just picking up on a couple of things from the staff memo on their environmental programs, if you can comment on. It looks like you're going after just the LEED basic certification. Is that, is that correct?
LEED.
Yes, it is. But, we very well think that we should be able to do better than that. It's just, early in a project, it's very hard to know how all the points shake out, that standards has changed very recently. So, absolutely can get certified, but we think there's a very good chance we can do better.
You mentioned the Apollo. Does it have a LEED score?
It'll be LEED gold when it's, it's not officially yet.
There you go.
We've built two LEED gold projects and one LEED silver projects in the last, the last three projects we've built.
You can do it.
Albeit under different standards.
It was brought up last time, the possibility for solar at this building.
That was my next question.
Very good. Oh, I didn't see your notes. But, we, it happens that we have a fundamentally east-west-oriented building, and that there's potential maybe for as much as 10,000 square feet of use of that roof for solar. The latitude that we're at makes for fairly efficient use of roof, because you can almost say that the pitch of the, of the solar panels is the same as your latitude. So, we're, we have a pitch of about 38 degrees. And we also have a full, pretty full preliminary design for a solar system, a solar panel system, not a whole solar system. Solar, we have a project downtown that we have a fairly advanced state of design for about a 6,000-foot solar array on a slightly smaller apartment building. We think that's working well, at least in the design phase. We think that if, and there are many, many things we need to do with this roof, like making sure that the mechanicals are integrated properly with the solar panel areas. But, we think we got, we think we have the space, and we can't say it with certainty to final design at this point, but that's a, that is a big goal of ours, to be able to have a major solar array. And there's, there are economic benefits for us, because you're gonna be able to sell the power back or use it in your building for a decent fraction of the, of the building's own needs. Virginia does not, just a, a bit of a plug, Virginia does not have anywhere near the level of solar credits and incentives state that exist in DC. But, there's still enough benefits from the solar itself, and there's enough character to this site, aligned as it is generally east-west, that we think it's very apt for, for the purpose. So, that's a long way of saying we think the solar has very strong potential here. We're gonna pursue it. We think we can do it. But, the devil's in the design.
Well, it was an idea born at this table, and it was a good one. So, process was constructive.
Good. Glad to hear it. One last thought, just to plant a seed. There's a lot of money being thrown around right now from VW as part of the settlements from their diesel scandal. Now would be a great time to plug into some of that, to install some free electric vehicle charging stations. So, I'll just suggest that. Tesla as well as VW are both offering a lot.
All right. Let's go, just real quick. I know it's getting late, and then we'll get into more detail when you get to the planning commission. I mean, I'll pick up on what you said. Big-picture level, yeah, I think this is, this is the 100% corner. It's been operating probably closer to like the 25% to 30% corner over the years, and this is certainly heading in the right direction. More specifically, I mean, I think I said this last time you were here. To me, I mean, something as simple as the on-street parking that you're showing is a big plus. I know there's some hurdles in doing that. That would be the first on-street parking on Broad or Washington in the city limits that I'm aware of. And I think that's a huge plus from a design perspective about having successful restaurants, retail, outdoor seating. That's something that has been lacking, and it hurts the Broad and Washington corridor. So, I know there, you know, that, I would strongly urge you to continue to pursue that. I know there's some, you know, there are approvals that are needed to do that. The other aspect is traffic. I know that, I see the traffic study in here, and, you know, I have, I probably have questions that I'll save for when you get to the PC. But, obviously, you know, introducing, you know, the mixed-use is gonna create, you know, obviously, peak hour, you know, the office component and peak hour issues. And so, just, you know, careful attention to the traffic as well, which I know, it looks like you're looking at that. But, I'll, so I'll just leave it at that for now.
All right, Anna, you're up.
And then I do that. I'll sound something.
All right. I'll try to be fast, too. So, special exception was here, has to have something special. You know, we love grocery stores and movie theaters, stuff like that. For me, you know, what's special about this is the quality, the office component, and I think the net, the net-net is something, I don't know if you were here at the last meeting when we found out we have to spend a million dollars, a billion dollars on a school. So, we need some net-net. But, I think quality, you don't talk about that much, but it wouldn't hurt, I think, to point out that you guys are gonna build a high-quality building. The office space, you're right, there is no Class A office space in the city, and I think you won't have any trouble renting that out if you build it. How big is the floor plate?
It's 12,500.
That's pretty good. Any chance you could throw another floor of office in there?
Yeah, we've included the option to add a floor. If we can lease all the existing space that we're proposing, we would add a floor.
All right. Because I think that'd be great. And then, in terms of the net-net, I mean, there's a big range. I think Mr. Goff said it was 350 to 900. That's a big range. So, I don't know all the levers that go into that. But, I think the, any tweaks that keep that going towards the 900 side makes it more special to me. And then, my other comment is, I haven't tracked it from, I know this is like the fifth or fourth, whatever, submission, the evolution on the lot inside. But, clearly, that's a sensitive area. I'm sure the neighbors will weigh in on that. But, it seems, from what you guys showed, to be getting better. And I don't know how people, how people feel about it now. But, obviously, I think you have to pay careful attention to that. That's the, you know, I think this is a commercial corner. We know it's gonna do stuff. But, as you get closer to those houses, it gets a little bit dicier on that. So, obviously, keep that high on the list of things we're working on. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Lyndy.
Just very quickly, I'm concerned about, again, our public parking space back there, and just hoping that all the possibility coexistence situations can be worked out. You know, I hear you saying paid parking. That's not paid parking. And, and so, I hope it's not coming into, well, you got your sandwich over there, therefore, you can't eat it over here. You know, my space and your space. So, I hope that gets out, worked out really, really well, because that would be important for the flow, for the whole situation. But, I think you've got some really good ideas coming along, and I'm looking forward to looking forward into it more.
Thank you. All right. Let me just wrap up the planning commission comments. Sort of the big picture, I think this is a very exciting proposal. It's been mentioned before that this corner, I believe, has been underutilized. And I like the, the thought and the consideration and the quality of the building that's being put here. I think this is a huge upgrade for what we, what we have there existing, and excited to get sort of into the details if this gets, you know, past the first reading and to the planning commission. I have lots of questions about traffic and how it flows and the parking. I'm not really sure I understand exactly between how the pedestrians move and the cars. I'm not sure I understand the loading and those kind of details. I assume they're in here somewhere, or we're gonna get to them at site plan. And I don't want to waste everybody's time at this point going through them. But, in overall, this looks very promising. I like the massing. I like the way it looks. And really, quite excited about having a Class A office space here in the city, which is something that's
Absolutely.
definitely lacking. So, all in all, really positive what I see here. Just some of the details as a planner that I want to dig into at site plan. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Lyndy, you want to start on our side of the table?
We're not leaving yet. Don't get so excited. You are packing up.
Thank you all for joining us tonight and sitting through the long meeting so far. I appreciate you all being so responsive from our last meeting. I appreciate going, kind of hearing, kind of point by point, your responses to our concerns. It really matters when you hear us. Starting kind of from the beginning, with Lotton, do you guys have the dimensions of the size of kind of that building that you've cut out, that kind of top floor you've set back? So, what is the new kind of setback and dimensions of that? Just, because it looks big on there, but I'd love to know what the specific dimensions were.
I think, if we go back to that slide, I think it's on the slide. The area that's been cut out, which is basically where you see that white, is approximately 35 feet setback from the Lotton facade, not from the setback line. So, somewhere between 30 and 35 feet has been cut out in that direction. And in the other direction, it's a little closer, about 80 or 90 feet.
And so, a question for staff that you don't have to answer now, but I'd love to know how that jives with T1 requirements. So, I don't know what T1 requirements are, but I'd like to know how that new thing jives with what is currently zoned. So, with that kind of cutout, are you also cutting out units from your unit, your apartments?
Yeah, we cut out, I think, about three total units. So, it's what, 2,400 square feet, which on average is about three units.
Is that in our updated fiscal impact or no?
We have not updated the fiscal impact analysis.
Okay.
What we did was take a quick look at how the new distribution of units would affect pupils. And it's gonna be very modest.
Okay. And is the commercial residential mix, if I remember correctly, like an 80, 20/80? 80% residential, 20% commercial? Is that?
Plus or minus, yeah. Exact percentages.
So, moving on to parking, I appreciate you kind of making progress on kind of the feedback we have around just access between the two lots. I share some of Mr. Wadyska's concerns and questions, actually, just how it'll work between pedestrians going through and parking going through. We currently actually have the Harris Teeter parking lot that actually punches through between Annandale and Broad. And so, you don't actually find pedestrians walking right in the middle, because cars do go in and out that way. So, they kind of are separated. So, I think those are things we'll have to figure out, that if you intend that to be kind of pedestrian walkway, you don't want them circulating probably with your cars at the same time.
Everyone likes their own parking lot better than others. But, we think, we think we're served well by a large, large plate that has dimension bigger than that and most other buildings of its kind. A large plate allows people to not cross paths as they circulate. And we think we have an identifiable pedestrian pathway through, through that large plate.
And I want to point out, I don't, actually, from a functioning point of view, I'm not sure it's gonna be radically different than what's there today. So, you walk across parking lots today to sort of traverse the site from Broad to get to the state, to get to the city lot, or to get to the State Theater. You're walking in drive-aisles. You're walking behind cars. In this case, I actually think when you get into a garage situation, people drive a little bit more cautiously. So, the combination of sort of a identified pedestrian zones, as well as people being a little bit more cautious, because they're inside a building, I think it'll actually not be that radically different from the experience today with the open lots.
So, I do think it's, you know, like I said, making progress. But, and I know there's great issues between the municipal lot and this property. But, I would love to give more thought into whether we think there might be opportunity for vehicular access between the two, and not just pedestrian access, if that's a possibility as well. Moving on to kind of placemaking and green space. So, I appreciate hearing kind of the variety and plethora of kind of public space you guys are introducing between the second-floor plaza, the lobbies, the pedestrian path we just talked about. I remain a little concerned that there aren't that many kind of ground-level kind of open and green space. So, for being a large corner of kind of the key corner of the city, it feels like there's a lot of building. And I would love to see actually more green. And I know that you have some on the second floor, the plaza. But, I think in reality, anytime you have to go through a lobby or go up, it's just not gonna be viewed as a public space, as much as you guys would love to open up and be generous and sharing that space. I think it'd be great if it's actually more accessible and visible from the ground level. And then retail. Appreciate hearing kind of the thought on retail. Do you expect to be able to make commitments in VCs with what sort of retail you'll have there?
I think we'll be able to make a commitment, at least on the corner restaurant. And then, potentially, we can talk about what, at what level of commitment on the others, as far as types of uses. I don't think we'll be in a position to tell you exactly who the other users are, though.
As evident based on the concerns, and so far, the past couple of months where you've had some key vacancies, that's gonna be a concern of all of us, is that we're gonna want to know, you know, who might go in there, and some sort of assurance that it will be filled. So, despite, I think, Mr. Goff's analysis, that even if the retail's empty, if I remember the numbers, it was between 220,000 to 600,000 net-net revenue, that even if retail's completely empty, the city still sees a fiscal benefit, which is great. But, I think we still want to make sure that it's filled, and you guys want to see it filled, too.
Of course.
So, okay. Thank you very much.
Oliver?
I just have two questions I'd like to address at this time. One has to do with the voluntary concessions that we have at this point for affordable dwelling units. And as I see, the minimum for our sort of special exception is 6%. And that is almost what you've proposed to do here. But, 1/3 of your affordable dwelling units, if I understand this, are at 100% of the area median income. And Mr. Shields, is that, that is not quite per policy, is it?
No, I think actually, we revised it in the recent submission to be
Right.
all 60%.
Right.
100% 60%.
Okay. That's, that's very good to hear, and I'm happy to know that. And I will just ask my other question, which is really a little bit more for the planning department and Mr. Shields, but just something for you all to think about. That corner at Washington and Broad is a very difficult corner right now for pedestrians to cross. And I know there have been some discussions in the past about things that we might talk to VDOT about doing in order to make it a little bit easier for people to move safely through that intersection. So, as we go forward through the special exception process, if we're going forward through the special exception process, I would want some attention paid to how we make that corner better. You know, do, is it a four-way cross at the same time? Is there something else we can do? What can we do in terms of lighting and signals? But, that corner, as you said, is very key. And you talked about the vehicular access. But, that vehicular access, the volume of traffic that's going through there impacts the ability of that city to, of the corner to activate for the downtown of the city. And I want to see what we can do while the rest of this project is going on.
That's an important point for us, because we think, we think our residents need to be able to walk to the doodle hopper and vice versa. So, that we're trying, because we're trying to be part of that downtown core, and at the sacrifice, say, to the speed with which cars move through that intersection, you're gonna get pedestrians flowing better across. There's a, there's some great future to the area across the street from us. And we want to, we want to animate that and be animated by that. So, I think that you're, to your very point, making pedestrian crossing easier at Broad and Washington headed west or east is gonna be a big, big goal.
And I just bring it up now, because these things always cost money. They always cost more money than They always cost more money than people think they ought to cost if you're a private citizen. And I just want to get that on the table as something that we need to take a look at, those costs now.
Mr. Snyder?
So, when was the last time you met with the neighborhood?
I can't give you the date off the top of my head. We've had considerable meetings before the previous submissions, but have not had meetings since the
So you haven't met with them on the submission?
No, we have not. I emailed it to them, but that's, that's it, as far as we've gone.
So it seems to me that's something you're going to want to do very quickly.
Absolutely. After this meeting, to have subsequent meetings.
Second issue is, how many apartments are you including in this?
This submission is 289.
So, let me talk about the office building for a minute. Several of us serve on the School Economic Development Committee. And we've had literally a parade of real estate people come in and say, forget office. So why should we accept that this office is going to be occupied when we've had developers tell us, developers that do this sort of business around here, forget it, there's a huge occupancy vacancy, even in Tyson's Corner, there is in Roslyn. So I'm trying to figure out the economics of this project. I understand we're going to get apartments, and I understand that you're going to build a Class A office building, and there'll be the creative cauldron. But the rest of it seems to be, particularly the numbers, at this point, my reluctance to move forward is, I don't know what I'm approving in terms of the benefit to the city. I get how it benefits you, and I respect that. You're allowed to put in 280 apartments where you couldn't today. And you're going to put in a Class A office space. And I certainly like some elements, certainly the pictures that you provided. But you promised best efforts and things like that. So I'm trying to figure out, you know, tell us more about how you're going to guarantee the office vacancy or the retail vacancy. For example, I think with the Kensington, we arranged guaranteed payments of a certain point that justified that project. So I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, what, what is this project right now? I have a tremendous range in numbers as well. And I think Planning Commissioner T. Ray some good questions about some of the economics. So I'm just trying to figure out, what is it that, that we're looking at right now?
I can see on the office front, similar to Ms. Hardy's question about retail commitments. Before, or before we finalize the voluntary concessions, we will have two likely full-floor tenants committed to the project. One of them is on the rendering Kidder Capital that's in the building today. They'll be taking a floor or another. I can't say the name today, but at some point, we'll be able to say that name and, and commit to those two full-floor tenants out of, out of the five floors. So I think that's, that's for any office development today, that's a fairly significant upfront pre-leasing commitment. And then all I can say, from our experience of owning two office buildings in the city, there is a lot of demand for larger spaces that we can't offer, or longer terms than we can offer in our existing buildings today. So we feel confident that there is demand out there, but we can work to prove, prove that to you with more concrete, concrete numbers and details.
Yeah, there is in our, with all respect to other, what other developers have done, everybody does their best. I think there's some great power behind the Hitt organization. It's a multi-billion dollar organization with representation across 10 states. And the Hitt organization has a need, and its affiliates have need for office space. I think they also have a reach among the tenant community, maybe that we haven't had before. And frankly, not to beat up on Broad and Washington unnecessarily, but there are corners and corners, just like a retailer. If you got those man and a half people, cars, not people, people are more, but a man and a half cars going past your office building and your sign and your architecture every day, you have a product that you might have a better shot at selling than, than others do. It's not that other people aren't trying just as hard, but they might, this might be the spot to anchor a major office building in Falls Church. I'm not sure there are 10 other spots like it in Falls Church. I'm pretty sure there aren't, but we think this is the spot. And we didn't make it that way, so I'm not bragging about it. History made it, and, and it's there today. I think there's a real, real strong impetus behind that very location.
I agree, it's a great location. The question is, what's the maximum revenue generation that we can get from it?
Get it full, and we think we'll generate some good
And how do, how do we assure that the retail and the office will generate up toward the maximum as opposed to the minimum? That's the question that I have.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
Can you scroll back to the linear park? I couldn't quite see the picture, and I was looking there, so I just need to look this way. Yeah, so where's the park? That's not it.
It's a, it's a pedestrian connection between Lawton Street and the
Is it to the left or the right of that wall?
To the left of that wall.
The left of the wall, where the green is. Okay. And then how close is the wall to 107 Lawton, the residence right next door?
The wall's existing.
The wall exists? Okay.
It's, is it on the property? It's on our property, intention is for it to stay.
So that would be the same distance for the
Yeah, that wouldn't change, yeah.
Okay. And previously, you had utilities there. Have they moved?
They're on the left side. They're in the area where, if you see that sort of low-sloped roof, the area between that low-sloped roof and the street will have some transformers.
And is that utilities for the whole building right there?
Most of them, yeah. Mostly electric utilities.
How much, will they make a lot of noise? What's the effect on the neighborhood there?
They're, they're They don't have any effect on the neighborhood.
Yeah, they're quiet, they're quiet. We obviously don't want, you know, they could, some people may say it's a nice, or we're going to close them in and make it attractive. But they make almost no noise.
Yeah, they're not operate, they're just, it's just the, it's where the incoming power to the project is.
Okay, okay. That's, that's important, I think, because that's one of those things that you don't think about when you look at there, but if you live right next to that, and it's making a lot of noise, that's a big difference.
Oh, there's, no, you won't hear any noise coming off the transformers. I mean, they're
Okay. And then as far as the fiscal impact, I think Mr. Rankin said we'd like to have it as close to the 900,000 number as possible. One of the ways to do that is to change the unit mix. I don't know how open you are to that, to change that unit mix a little bit, to look at what we've done in some of those, some of our other residential buildings to, because that changes the fiscal impact a lot.
I think we're open to certainly having the conversation. The mix we propose is what we think, both in looking at the other projects and what is missing, like three bedrooms and, and some bigger units. Whereas I think a lot of developers are marketing to strictly millennials, we, we see this being highly coveted by empty nesters or retired people or older couples, divorcees, that want maybe larger, larger units, not huge units. So we really think there's a, there's a demand, and, and the price points of these units will drive those types of, of residents to the building. But we're certainly open to discussing your thoughts on, on driving off the impact.
And then a question for Mr. Goff. The fiscal impact on this one, how does, I'd just like to know how it compares to the other projects. You know, you do that once a year, so it would be great to see how this fits into the other projects that we have.
Sure. Looking at that today, look at it on a greater Look at it on a greater basis compared to other mixed Average right now, net revenue on a greater basis, plus the five projects that are in place is about $112,000 a year.
Oh, sorry, I thought it was on. Is about $112,000 a year across the board. This project, if we take the midpoint in what I reported earlier for a net revenue, would be $258,000 per acre.
Okay, Mr. Z.
Well, it's obvious that I need to carry all 55 pounds of paper written with me tonight. Didn't have time to parse through all. Maybe I should, at least just get my weight training. I am, I'm happy that you took the suggestion to look at the rooftop cellar, even though I'm unhappy who actually mentioned to you that you should look at that. But I'm sure with sufficient effort, you'll embrace the world of the future, which means that, you know, you will be building a facility that will survive the test of time and will be environmentally responsible. So it's, and you've certainly embraced all the other things that, based on experience, make projects work. With respect to your discussion on retail and so on, I, I don't know what you would, how you would fill 13,500 square feet of retail, but on a curated basis, but I'm sure you've got some good ideas. So I won't question you about that. I think you're also more highly evolved in having penetrations for pedestrians and addressing how that flows. And even though some of this, when you say they can go from Broad Street directly through the building to the state theater, they're still traversing your entrance to your garage. I mean, you know, that's a take-your-life-in-your-hands kind of approach, you know? No one likes to be run over by an Audi Q5, so I'm sure you'll improve that as time goes I'm a little bit disappointed that we've moved to a higher bedroom count. I think the discussion here, what I'm hearing is that you've shifted from marketing to millennials, and of course, we all know that millennials like to live with their parents and not by themselves, so, you know, I can understand that shift. When you talk about divorcees and older people and people like that that might want more than one bedroom. I've met extensively, well, and have had extensive contact with the Lawton Street neighbors. I, I think they're a little bit disappointed that they haven't, well, they're not in the building profession, so they don't understand what you've emailed them. So when you show, you know, trees that you can see through, trees don't look like that. But if you drill down into what you really still have, and this, when you talk about conceptual here, you're, in your March 29th presentation, you have four transformer vaults. I know they don't hum, but they're still ugly. If you live across the street, you live next to, you're not going to want to see transformer vaults. So are you telling me that you're not going to see those vaults? They're gone? You're going to camouflage them to look like Lawton Street transformer vaults? No, well, you know, I think you're doing, you're already moving down the path to, to try and make sure that the people that live on Lawton Street will embrace this development and say they like being able to walk to the theater, but, you know, every time they see a transformer vault, they're going to freak. I would, too. Would you buy a house with four transformer vaults in plain view? I think the answer is no. So please, let's do something about that. I also think the city parking lot is a little bit orphaned. I mean, you know, what you've proposed here is perfect for you, instead of a mural, you give us a parking structure, right? So, but I don't think that conversation's really taken place. Maybe we avoid that, but, you know, I think that there's sufficient thinking here that we ought to make this part of this development one way or another. And so I would encourage you to have a discussion with city staff on how we can make that something more than a blank parking lot. Because if you don't take possession of that and do it as part of this project, it will never, nothing will ever happen to that. There'll just be a blank parking lot. And that would be a crime. So, you know, look forward to that as well. The apartments are built of wood, right? So knowing that, then there's a practical limitation on how high these can go, and, so we understand that. But the office building is concrete, steel?
Concrete.
Concrete. So you could put another 30, 4, 5 floors on top of it, easily. Now, hate to blue-sky this in the middle of a room of about 50 people here, but office buildings are dark at night. You're not about to employ a Hong Kong solution where you'd like, you know, have all these flashing LEDs and have Kidder Capital go horizontally. You're not going to do that. We know you're not going to do that. So you're going to have a dark building above Lively Corner, and I don't know that, you know, that's enough. Maybe you could put three stories of, on top of what you have on your office building, you'd make them really, really high-end condos. Think about that. That would be alive at night. I would love, if I were a divorcee, I'm not. I would love to have a condo. I got one of those condos, I might be a divorcee, so. And I think I'll stop there, except that I, you know, whatever else, pay attention to, to if you were living across the street, what you would like to see. I just ask you to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
If I talk too long, it may enhance the chances Dan will be a divorcee. I'll try to be brief. So as Ms. Hardy's questions indicated, the Economic Development Committee had a chance to take a quick look at this in our last meeting. And I've had a chance to visit with the Lawton Street neighbors last week. So I'm just going to rattle through about 12 points, some of which have already been made. And you don't have to like write them down, I'll just give you this piece of paper, because like all the emails I write, I expect to see them on the front page of the newspaper. And, you know, my notes here, I'll handwrite to you. More office square footage. I think at this corner, we are not going to be inclined to have an 80/20 mix. You're just asking a world of woe for yourself if you don't get the commercial number up to something that has a, preferably has a three in front of it, the residential number with a six in front of it would be great, too. But I think, you know, what Mr. Z said is a good place to start with that. Guarantee equality ground floor tenants has been talked about. You know, your guarantees are great. We do need to come up with some mechanism for, you know, tying COs to occupancy of, of the ground floor retail, I think. Cash profers for CIP costs for schools, library, parks, et cetera, need to be, these are my best-in-class asks, because I think it's a great, you know, opportunity that the city has to have, you know, the headline out of this meeting is powerhouse developer says there's an office market in the city of Falls Church. I mean, that's big news regionally, and, and so we need to, you know, we want to work with you. Appreciate, at least I do, the work that you've done so far. But, you know, those who have much, much is expected, so. A solid cash proffer, best-in-class on ADUs was mentioned. I would like to see, for special exception at this corner, again, you know, 6% is like the baseline. That's not what we're aiming at when we're trying to do something exceptional. I would like to see an ADU number that's got a 10 in front of it, if possible. Best-in-class lead was mentioned. Generous long-term lease for Creative Cauldron. Don't want to, don't want to have anybody sitting here 10 years from now asking, how's Creative Cauldron going to be able to afford to stick around? You know, whatever all you real estate gurus can cook up that ensures their place there for, you know, another couple of generations. Connectivity of municipal parking lot, Ms. Hardy mentioned, I'm a little also concerned about orphaning our municipal parking lot. The vehicular connectivity, somehow, you've got to be able to get into that lot, and if you don't have any connectivity, then there really is only, you can only get into that lot if you're northbound on Washington Street. There would be no access to the lot southbound. So something's going to have to be done, either in your project or on a median cut. That needs to be thought about. Maximum feasible setback or step down for Lawton and Broad. You know, you've worked on that. Look forward to hearing what the neighbors think about what you've proposed. Keep working at it as hard as you possibly can. Outdoor gathering space, I like what you've explained in that regard. I think it's both accessible and secure. I think security is somewhat more of a concern, maybe, than it used to be back in the old days. I have several points on traffic management. Heavy traffic calming installation on Lawton Street at the interest of the neighborhood. That should be part of the transportation package, so that there's, you know, nubs or bumps or something that indicates to people that you're heading into a neighborhood, and basically, we don't want you in here, we want you to stay on the main street. Residents only neighborhood, street parking enforcement should be at the ready. The city knows all about how to do that and can work with you. I'm, I'm more keen on a loading zone for deliveries in and out of the building than I am on-street parking at Broad. My, I think what we've learned from buildings like Kensington and others is, you know, the trucks want to pull up in front of them on Broad Street, and that blocks traffic, and that, that's never good. Internal drop-off and pickup for Creative Cauldron, I think you've done that. Shuttle to Metro, electric vehicle charging, Zipcar, Uber, Lyft, you know, all that stuff. Here's something we learned. Solid information on the exit date of your current LSEs. You know, Applebee's, Jillers, Complete Strategist, RCN, you know, have you got deals with all those people that enable you to move them out? Because that's been a problem in another project. Just as an aside, Just as an aside, I'm probably the sole member of the keep Applebee's movement in the city. But it's not even 11 o'clock yet, so I will wave the flag for that and say, well, seriously, I mean, you know, obviously, we want a big, upscale, one of the, you know, fabulous restaurants like you all control. That's great. But, you know, I don't always want to go out and spend $100 or even $50. Sometimes I'll clip the coupon out of the paper, and I want to go to some other mid-market kind of restaurant. So I think it's important when you do your mix of ground floor tenants that you take that in consideration. Dog walkers, this is a real down-to-the-weeds thing, but every time we do a building now, people in the neighborhood complain about all the dogs. So, you know, the...you know, Rushmark, you guys did a dog washing station, and that's good, but what we need is a dog walking station, because they end up all over the neighborhood, and you know what else ends up all over the neighborhood? The construction management program, I know you all know how to do this better than anybody, so let's just make sure that that is very well done. Where do the workers park? Where do the material lay down? Noise, you know, it's going to be a big disruption to the neighborhood for, you know, two years. And I know you'll do a good job on that. And then firming up fiscal impact numbers, which has already been discussed. Okay, thanks.
Okay. I've got a few comments, a few questions. Let me start by saying I'm aware of your reputation, your high-quality outfit. I'm confident your people have your word. With that being said, I'd like to see things ultimately commitments in writing, voluntary concessions. We've had enough experience in this city with, you know, promises or things that should happen that don't happen, and so I think at the end of the day, most of us, if not all of us, want to see the commitments that you make be in writing for us, and the voluntary concessions, the place to do that. The shared parking, I think I heard that you'd be opening your office lot to folks at, for example, the State Theater and other places at market prices, which I'm fine with. I'd like to see the hours that you want to do at State Theater runs pretty late, and there's been issues with towing and the like and that, and so it'd be great to see the actual hours that you're proposing to allow the parking to be available. I share the concerns about three-bedroom apartments. I'm not sure it's really consistent in keeping with the millennials we're trying to attract that we don't currently have in our city, and so I would ask you to reconsider or consider your three-bedroom units. The retail, I appreciate what you're saying, but I really would love to see a commitment to some kind of compelling retail. Every project that I've voted for, at least since my time on council, has had something compelling, and that's compelling in terms of quality of life and also fiscally. Grocery stores, movie theaters, and so I would love to hear something that you guys could offer us, a commitment in retail that would be compelling. And to me, a pocket grocery store would be really exciting. It's at the crossroads, as you mentioned, of some major intersections, and there's some new concepts in grocery store retailing that are out there, that are coming out there. I'd love for the city to be one of the first place that has one of these kind of grocery stores, or maybe there's other uses. But I'd like to see some kind of commitments for that. We've had issues. We've got a building that just got approved or just got built that's basically, the whole ground floor has been vacant for a period of months, maybe pulling down a year. We don't want that to happen in your building, and I know that won't, but we'd like to see some commitments, or I'd like to see some commitments about that. I share the concerns also about Creative Cauldron, and I would like to make sure that everyone fully understands the commitments you're making and what they're going to have to come up with. For example, in their current location, they've had difficulties paying taxes and CAM and things like that. So it's not just the rent that really impacts how they can function. We don't have to get into it tonight, but I would ask that you give some consideration, have a dialogue with the total cost package, because for them, rent may be what they focus on, but frankly, if your space is 50% bigger, your CAM could be 50% bigger, your taxes, insurance, everything's 50% more. And so I would just suggest or ask that you speak with them about the total package, not including tenant improvements and the...obviously, the rent. And also the term of the lease. I know we talked about that a little bit last time, and I think I heard 20 years. But just some additional conversation with that. I think this is probably the last place they'd like to stay, you know? Be here forever would be great, hopefully for everybody. With respect to the stone wall on Lawton, have to say on...I would certainly give great deference to the neighbors, but I'm not a big fan of having walls up against sidewalks in public spaces. I just, in general, think that we ought to enliven our streetscape. And so I don't know if there are alternatives, and I certainly would like to hear what the neighbors have to say about it. Personally, I just don't like the idea of walking shoulder up to a eight-foot, a seven-foot wall. So if maybe you could give some thought to that. I would be interested also in the setbacks. What is a setback to the wall on Lawton Street, for example? Do you know?
Sure. I don't know off the top of my head, but it is...so just to address, first off, it's...well, the building is set back 26 feet from the curb line, and the sidewalk is out towards the curb, so that experience that you're describing of walking with a seven-foot wall next to you is a bit of a misnomer, is actually be probably 12 or 15 feet of landscaping between the sidewalk and the wall, so...
What's your proposed section? You would have a five-foot sidewalk? Would you have a planting strip and then a five-foot sidewalk?
Bit of a planting strip, and then the sidewalk, and then landscaping, and then the building.
Okay. It doesn't really show that well in your plan or your...but anyway, I still...personally, I prefer not to have walls up against public spaces, but I'd just ask for you to speak, particularly with the neighbors, that would count probably more than what I think, but I have some issue with that. Your setback on Washington Street, you'd mentioned you have a generous sidewalk. I'm just curious, 20 foot is our requirement. What do you guys have for yours?
We pulled the building...there's a interesting...the intersection is not an orthogonal intersection, so there's a little bit of geometry there. Our building is orthogonal in the sense that we keep our building at a 90-degree angle. So what that does is, because of the angle of Washington Street, it gets wider as you get towards the corner, and that becomes that whole outdoor seating zone.
Is a setback at the corner?
It varies, so right at the corner, I think it's probably, what, about 40 feet, 45?
20, and then the arcades are on 80.
Okay.
At the widest. And then it starts to...
So 38 feet at the corner.
And that's...some of that's the one underneath your building, correct?
Well, it's underneath that arcade, but we see that arcade, you know, that's a deliberate architectural move, first off, to address the corner, to bring the scale down of the building at the corner, but also to sort of expand the public realm there, so...
And so how high is the arcade?
It's probably, what, about 30 feet, 32 feet?
It's around 20.
The floor-to-floor height is 20 feet out there, so I think the height of the arcade, at least to the underside of the arcade, is probably around 18 to 19 feet.
Okay. And your retail height is along the whole front edge? I imagine it varies with grade, but approximately...
Yeah, it's that same thing. The floor-to-floor height is 20 feet at the corner.
And how about down to the other end of Lawton?
It's...actually, it's...the Broad's fairly flat, so that stays approximately the same. It does get a little smaller as you climb up Washington Street.
Okay. And materials, I didn't hear much about that. The architecture looks quite good, but could you tell us briefly about the materials?
Yeah, pretty much everywhere here that you see sort of a red or pink or brown tone that's a masonry material. The office building is a...basically, it's masonry as well as some metal and a lot of just glass. At the residential, the bulk of it is masonry with also with hardy panel and then the glass windows and the metal balconies.
How much hardy panel do you have? I didn't see...it didn't seem like there was much there.
There's not that much. I don't have a percentage of it, but I would say it's less than 50%.
Okay. And so let me ask you...
I wanted to clarify, most of the places where the hardy is is actually in the...into the courtyards and into the areas that are less visible from the street.
Less than 50% of the materials that are brick or...either brick or hardy. There's a lot...there's a lot more glass than there is.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I guess I would ask a question of staff as well about...you'd mentioned the windows, and I think you need a 10-foot setback, right, from the...to have an operable window, so both sides?
It depends on the amount of windows you're trying to have, so, yeah.
But you were talking about putting some right on the property line. If that's the case, so what happens when your neighbor wants to build right up against the property line?
It's on us to remove the windows and build the wall solid.
So that's what you would do? Would the units not have windows, then?
No, those are just in the corridors.
Well, those are just corridor windows. Okay. And I guess if the city staff could confirm that understanding as well, that would be great. And I guess we'd need to put that in the conditions that you would...
Yeah. I don't know that I've ever done it at Falls Church. It's not an unusual condition, you know, frankly, because it's kind of a win-win for everybody. It's just a matter of if and when the building gets built, we agree to revise the building to...but no, there are no windows in apartments like that.
Okay. On the mural, which I think is a great idea, I'd love to see a concession that basically just indicates you guys will pay for it. You know, we've had issues where we could have murals in places, but they never seemed to happen. I think if it was on...the honkers was on you, it would get done, so I'd love to see that as well. Love to see a bigger office. I think most everybody here would like to see the office space expand. I'm not sure what we could do to help you make a decision to do that. I know, obviously, you may at some point down the pike, but we'd love to have that up front. You know, if you could add a floor of office, I think that would be very exciting for the city.
We certainly want the ability to do that.
We want you to have more than the ability. We'd love to make a commitment to do it. So see if there's a way we can get you to commit to a floor.
We're on the same team. We want that extra floor of office.
Yeah, but we don't want an option. We want it there, you know? If you can find a way to do that, I think we'd be very excited about that.
Is the city interested in taking a floor, maybe, for our new city council chambers?
No, but it's a great floor for our...
After the meeting we just had this afternoon.
It's a great place for architects, I tell you. It's a wonderful...so let's see what else I got here. The roof usage, I heard you mention about the office space. How about on the residential side? Do you expect any amenities or activities on the roof that'll sort of overhang Lawton Street or the neighbors back there?
No.
No. And it may be a misnomer from the rendering on Lawton Street. The area we took out on Lawton Street is not a roof deck. It'll just be a roof.
Gotcha.
So there's no roof decks that overlook the neighbors.
Okay. Let's see what else I've got. I would also like to see the transformers hidden, you know, whether it's in your garage or where it is. I think we'd probably find a place for those outside the public realm, hopefully. Anyway, that's about what I've got, Dan. Does it sound like you had another comment or question?
Yeah, I did. I was looking forward in the voluntary concessions, some mentioned a stormwater and also for the...to replace the trees that were being taken out, kind of a monetary contribution. It's not in here, but I think you should expect to hear about that, about the trees. And you are...you are going to retain the stormwater up to an inch of rainfall?
Well, currently, the design plan is to, at the absolute minimum I get the city standards, we're looking at other potential...
Currently, the design plan includes to meet the minimum standard, by all means, but we're also going to look at options to increase where we can. Stormwater retention via green roofs or recycled stormwater in the building of some kind.
Right. The current city requirement is for you to maintain the current level of stormwater retention, which is nothing on that site, so...
Right.
I'm looking forward to you guys actually taking a look at that and making commitment to retain that one inch of rainfall for the entire site, so that might mean a vault somewhere.
Yeah, currently, we do have a vault system proposed with some manufacturer treatment devices, but we do intend to talk to Public Works and work through that.
Okay. I would like the city manager to take a note to come back to us with affirmative commitment. Thank you. And thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else? Any other questions, comments? If not, thank you all for coming out this evening.
Can we, before we walk out the door, maybe talk about our confirmed process and next steps? We've got, under the schedule, the staff has published, we're back here, I believe, in a week.
Yeah, I don't know if we're going to be able to resolve our schedule right now. I don't know if people have any thoughts they want to share, but...
Does staff have...we talked a little bit about this at the EDC, but does the manager have anything?
The...
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Fuller, I think, could speak to it as well. I will say that this schedule is one that...
This is really something. It's a huge festival.
You know, we've laid it out this way on the council's schedule for a couple of weeks now. The basic intention would be, with submission number four, that would go through boards and commissions concurrent with the staff review. Now, the staff review is complete on version three, so the staff, it's not a de novo review. And then the council would get it back with the benefit of all the boards and commissions' reviews, which we think would be very valuable. So that is our recommendation, but Mr. Fuller, if you want to just speak to the process?
Yeah, on page, I believe, 14 of your staff report, we had it outlined there. You can look at it as well. But as the city manager had said, I think there's some benefit to getting it out to board and commissions, you know, for the public review as well. Staff review would be concurrently to that. You know, we would report back to you at the end of the summer in a work session, and then second reading could be scheduled in the fall. So, you know, that...I mean, while we've outlined a schedule that this could move forward right away, obviously, it's your purview to decide, but I think, you know, if we could have an understanding of, you know, what the next step is, that would be helpful as the developers asking tonight, so...
Okay. Vice McConnell.
So what does the schedule look like if we push it back a little bit to actually give staff a chance to review submission four before it goes to boards and commissions? Because it seems it gets confusing sometimes if boards and commissions are reviewing comments before they're actually fully formed.
Well, what...the confusion we've had in the past is when the developer makes significant changes while it's out in board and commission, and that would not be the case here. This would be a case where staff has done a very thorough review. There have been some changes. They're not really huge changes, and so the staff comments are going to be, I think, probably marginal, but along the lines of what, you know, what we've reviewed in the past. So it's just a question of...I think probably just to answer your specific question, that would...the confusion we've had in the past would not be the case here, where we had multiple sets of plans that the boards and commissioners were trying to keep track of.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, I guess as I'm listening to this, I don't really understand financially this project at this point. I don't know what we would be moving forward on. We've got a huge range of estimates. We've got a promise to occupy, but no reality, and the neighborhood hasn't had a chance to see this. It seems to me that if we take a little time now...and the other thing is, frankly, whether we like it or not, first reading is viewed by developers as it completely shifts the ability to negotiate. So for all those reasons, I suggest a little more time. I'd like to hear the answers to the questions that council members and others have provided, get the response from the neighborhood, which hopefully, there'll be a way by which you can bring the neighborhood along by making changes. I'd like to see that in advance rather than shift the leverage point with a first reading, because I've heard a lot of questions, again, the economics of this. This is the absolute primary intersection. We want to develop it. We want to do something about it, but there are a whole lot of questions about this project right now that go to the fundamental economics of it, as well as the design with respect to the neighborhood.
I'm Ms. Oliver.
So Mr. Shields, at a minimum, could you just come with two alternative schedules next week, please?
Well, I mean, yeah, we'll be posting the packet. We need to sign off on the packet by Wednesday, so we need a decision tonight whether this is on the agenda for Monday night.
Mr. Mayor?
If it's going to be on the agenda for Monday night.
May I?
Sure.
Again, we talked a little bit about this at the EDC, but, you know, the main interest in trying to get this out to boards and commissions in June is obviously to get it before them, before they drift away for the summertime. I understand the concerns that have been expressed, and I wonder if there's, you know, some middle ground here where we could get a updated staff comment and, you know, bring it back to us. And, you know, we can discuss it a little further next Monday, and maybe we'll get to the end of that discussion, and we'll be ready to vote, and maybe we won't. I mean, I just feel like if we don't put it on the agenda for next Monday and don't talk about it, then, you know, there's a little bit of, oh, yeah, they're just talking about another development. That'll never happen, and people will go away for the summer, and we don't want that to happen, I think.
Mr. C.
Yes, thank you. I think this project would benefit from another couple of weeks of incubation, at the very least. of incubation, at the very least. I'm not really so concerned about people drifting away for summer vacation. If they don't have the time to look at this in the very generous three months to look at this, then I think that, you know, we have a separate set of problems. But we've, all of us have asked a whole bunch of questions tonight, coming from planning, coming from council. And if we sat here another two hours, I'm sure we could come up with even more questions. So, let's get answers to these questions first, and then we'll see whether we're ready. I think that's as much as I can promise, certainly.
Okay. I think we've heard from the majority of council that we need to spend a little more time on this and would like staff to do a little more analysis. Hopefully, the developer can make some progress in some of the questions and issues that are proposed to it, and we'll come up with revised schedule in the next week or so going forward. But this will move forward, but we need, I think, a little more time.
So, Mr. Mayor, could I ask, do we then anticipate that we would discuss this at all next Monday? Or, I'm just, for the sake of the neighbors, you know, people begin to plan, you know, do I need to come to the meeting next Monday to offer my thoughts? I would like to keep the pressure on, you know, the applicant, to respond to some of the questions that we've all asked. And--
Why don't we set a time? Can you guys give us a time when you can respond to the comments that were raised today?
Why some of the questions? Why not all the questions?
I don't mean to say just yet. Not just my questions--
The bottom line is--
Not just yours, but also--
You've got a nice project. It needs some more work, and at least some are most of our opinion. And we don't want to delay it. I know you want to move lightning speed, and I get that. I understand that. But part of that process is you all responding to the questions and concerns you've heard tonight. Part of that is working some more with the neighbors, and you may feel you've already worked enough with them. But I think you're hearing from people. We want you to spend some more time with the neighbors. And part of it is just for staff to get back, because staff hasn't analyzed your latest submission. So, there's a lot of balls in the air right now. You can help on your end by turning around quickly what you heard tonight, what you can do, what you can't do, what you heard. I'm sure there's some things you can do. I'm sure there's some things you can't do or won't do. And the sooner you can let us know on those, I think it would be helpful to advancing this cause as well. So, I don't know if you have any thoughts about when you might be able to get back to us on what you've heard tonight?
We, if you give us a spot on Monday, we're going to respond on Monday. And that's not a joke. We are highly focused. We've thought through, we don't, haven't talked about everything we've thought about, but we've thought about almost everything that's been talked about here. So, we're not, we're not in any fire drill to respond next Monday. We can respond next Monday with thought, because we've thought a lot about the questions that you've asked already.
Because I think we've hit every deadline that's been--
Why don't you do this, then? Why don't you respond to staff by Thursday? Okay, Thursday's kind of our timeframe. We get ready for Monday's agenda.
Right.
And so, you can respond to staff in writing, or you get together with staff on Thursday, whatever you want to do. But communicate to staff what your responses are to things, and then we can evaluate and go from there and figure out whether you go on the agenda for Monday or whether you might need some more time. How about that?
Mr. Mayor, there are other factors here. I mean, the neighborhood, to me, is number one. So, I don't see any reason why it can't be on the agenda for no action on Monday. And we'll see how things go, and we set the timetable at that point.
Yeah, I think that's, you guys-- So, why don't we plan on that? Maybe by Thursday, again, you can respond to what you've heard today as questions, issues. In the meantime, maybe try to reach out to the community, the neighbors, the next couple of days. At least set something up if you can't get together. Maybe staff can accelerate the review process so they have some responses as well. And then by Thursday, we'll have a better idea about things. On Monday, certainly a better idea, and we can talk about it. If not advanced, at least have some discussion about it.
Sure.
Okay. Does that sound like a plan to everyone? Okay, no one's answering, so--
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, as always, cuts the baby, yeah.
All right.
All right. Well, the planning commission is going to excuse itself.
Okay, sounds good. All right, we have miles to go before we sleep. So, thank you all for coming out. Are we going to a closed session now? Is that the plan?
We have a quick--
Yeah, the budget amendment.
All right, let's do the budget amendment. Staff?
Okay, good evening, council. I'll try to be brief in interest of time. The item for you is fiscal year 2017. That's the current fiscal year budget amendments. We are requesting five items. And in brief, in general, none of them have an impact on the unassigned general fund balance, the reserve, the unassigned portion. And in brief, the items are increasing the general fund appropriation by 9,784. This is funded by two grants, one for the sheriff's department and one in the parks. The second one is an increase, an appropriation increase of 200,000 from the capital reserves to fund the increase in the George Mason High School planning project in the CIP. This will bring the total appropriated for this project to 900,000. This already has a 700,000 appropriation. The brief breakdown of the need for funding for pre-referendum is 56,000 for the feasibility study, and you all have approved that. 56,000 for phase one of the commercial real estate advisory piece, phase one, pre-referendum, and 68,000 for the project management services for Arcadez. This has, this will be supported, as I mentioned, from the capital reserves, so, which has a balance of 9.9 million currently. The next request--
Excuse me, could I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
In our budget, we approved allocating money into that capital reserve. So, the numbers that you're providing, are you providing that afterwards? No. So--
The 600,000 is for the next year, starting July 1st. So, this is for the current year.
So, you're taking an additional 200,000 out. But because we voted the 600,000, we're going to be replenishing at least some of the money that's been taken out of the capital reserve.
That's correct.
Okay. I just didn't want to relate those two things. Thank you.
Sure. The next is an interdepartmental transfer of 200,000. 100,000 is for Department of Development Services to fill the shortfall due to the delay in grant for the bike share program. The transportation planner was hired prior to the grant, and the grant covers the transportation planner through, but only from the date it was awarded. So, and for that. And also, the vision part of the comprehensive plan incurred some extra expenses on the temporary employees. So, to cover for that, it'll be coming from the finance department, savings in the finance department, and then 100,000 in the jail services due to the excess inmates that they're serving in Arlington. So, two of those interdepartment, no effect on the general fund reserve. And in addition, use of up to 450,000. This is coming from the third quarter that we saw, I think, a month and a half back. So, up to 450,000 due to shortfall in the permit fees from the anticipated Mason Row project, which got delayed. So, offset with some savings, underspending in expenditures. So, and we will, only, this will be done after the audit and financials are provided, and we're not going to take any more than that is required. But the guess so far, the estimate, is 450,000. A new request that's not in the report is additional appropriation of $800 for the Operation Earth Watch project, supported by donations. So--
Did you say $800?
$800.
Yeah, why don't you pass on those little things? I don't want to spend time.
It just has to, because council approves every dollar appropriation.
We don't have to hear about them, though. Just keep on, keep on rolling here.
So, that's it. That's final. That's final.
All right, that's it. Great. Any questions? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Just two quick ones. The 700,000 to date plus the additional 200 for the campus planning, will that take us to November referendum? Or do we expect any other costs?
That's intended to take you--
And then the 100,000--
The 100,000 for the increased jailing costs, do we expect that to be kind of recurring, ongoing thing? Like, is this a new trend that we should plan on having in future years in budgets? Or do we think it's kind of like a one-time--
I think Phil's going to stay out of trouble. You promised that, didn't you, Phil?
Yeah.
Thanks for the talk, too.
We'll have to keep watching. It's possibly recurring. We had cut it pretty much because we were moving more and more to Alexandria. Arlington judges have not allowed that to happen as much. And so, that's one of the reasons for the uptick. So, if the judges keep with that posture and everything else remains the same, we'll need to build that 100,000 in next year as well, or FY '19 and beyond. And just one last thing on the budget. So, with the $450,000 of use of the building permit reserve, you all had set aside almost $900,000. So, this is going to take almost half of that building permit reserve in FY, in the current fiscal year. Now, that's the worst-case scenario. We'll see how the, you know, in August, we'll know where we've landed, and we'll only take what's needed.
All right, anything else? If not, let's move on. Thank you for sticking around, Senator Oliver. Yeah.
All right. Wyatt, on that, on that reserve for building permit fees, if Mason Row doesn't go forward, will we use the rest of that 450,000 next year? I mean, it's in the budget, right?
Yes, it is.
Yes, if it doesn't happen at all, it's, we did trim our building permit projections for FY '18, but there was still some Mason Row in there. So, we would likely still have a, we would have a deficit in FY '18 as well.
All right, anything else? If not, thank you so much for sticking around. We appreciate it. Have a good evening or good morning.
Thank you.
All right, what's next, Mr. Shields?
So, the next, next item is the capital finance agreement for Womata. And let me, Cindy, do you want to handle this? Just provide a quick overview. Here's the, here's the bottom line on it. For the city, air proportionate share would be 1.7 million, and that would result in $117,000 of additional debt service in FY '19. And so, that's kind of the bottom-line picture for the city of Falls Church. We would propose that we opt-in to Womata's issuance of debt, rather than have us issue the debt on our own books. There's pros and cons either way, but because we're taking on so much debt in our capital program, we think it's better just to have it on Womata's books and pay the debt service through our annual subsidy to Womata.
So, there's three actions this evening that are built into the staff report. One's the approval of the capital financing agreement, the CFA, the opt-in to the FY '18 debt issuance that Mr. Shields just mentioned, where the debt service kicks in in FY '19. And then the third item is to approve refunding, opt-in or opt-out for 2009 bond issues. Staff recommends opting in and partnering to have that refile save us a small amount over the remaining 17 years. But it would cost us half a million dollars if not budgeted to opt out. So, it's much more prudent on that one to opt in. We are recommending proceeding with the CFA and the opt-in recommendations for this action. And then, as you know, both the city attorney and the city manager have put additional information together to weigh questions and issues, and I believe we're prepared to go into closed session if that's council's directive.
Okay. Anything else?
Thanks. Mr. Mayor, I'd suggest we not decide on this until we have the closed session.
Okay.
Thanks.
Do we have a motion to go into closed session, then, upon a motion made by council member?
Snyder.
Seconded by council member--
Connolly.
And passed by a voice vote of city council. Council went into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7 for consultation with legal counsel regarding specific matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such council. Transit funding. Councilmember Connolly.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Oliver.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Z.
Yes.
Tarter. Okay. All right, let's get rolling. Councilmember Duncan.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Oliver.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Z.
Yes.
Tarter. Okay. On a motion made by council member--
Z.
Councilmember--
Hardy.
No. I'm not going to repeat that, though. This is a certification. We've come out of closed session and only appropriate matters were discussed. I've read the motion.
Yes.
Didn't make it on the air. Councilmember Connolly says yes. Duncan.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Oliver.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Z.
Yes.
Tarter, yes. Okay. I have one thing I wanted to discuss, and it's been mentioned by others in terms of wrap-up, which is the Paris Climate Treaty and the idea maybe the city's signing off, signing on in some capacity. I guess staff has come up with this. Is this what you guys are recommending or considering?
We have, we haven't looked at it super closely.
Yeah, I think that basically the question for the council would be, would you have any objection if we pursued this and added the mayor to this list? I think it's the mayor's decision, really, if the mayor wanted to do it, but with the consent of the council.
And this language that's before you is directly off of the Bloomberg's foundation site and the language that the 211 other mayors have signed on to. So, it's the verbatim language.
So, what does this commit us to?
Well, even the Paris Accords weren't commitments. So, this is a, but what it, the language of it says is--
I mean, I can read it. If you're going to read it, I don't need to--
Intensify our efforts and push for new action to meet the 1.5 degrees Celsius target.
So, that, this in its totality is essentially this piece of paper? Or is there anything more than to it?
This is basically it. And what I don't, what I can't answer clearly is how this marries up to our commitments already--
I could answer that.
--of the reductions in terms of the 1.5 Celsius.
Yeah. You know, to your first question, the mayor of Alexandria, Silverberg?
Yeah.
Yeah, she signed it. So, I mean, so you would be in good company. But the United States committed to a 27% reduction in greenhouse gas by 2025, and that's, that gets us to the 1.5 degrees Celsius target. What we passed in March pledges an 80% reduction by 2050. So, it, even though there are two timelines, gives us some flexibility in meaning that and beyond. I mean, it gets us to that trajectory to exceed what was promised by 2025. And we did that in March. Good move, everybody. You guys were all prescient.
What do people think about this?
So, Mr. Mayor, here are a couple suggestions. I think we ought to reiterate and stand by both regional and local commitments. That would be my predicate. Number one, we've committed to do this, and we're going to do it. The second thing is, in my opinion, the gutting of the EPA from a budgetary and organizational standpoint is actually going to have a much more immediate impact on, on this region's welfare. And it's not either-or, but I would like to see any action, particularly if the council is going to take it, that we also talk about maintaining the EPA, the Chesapeake Bay, and those other things. Because our air quality is in large measure the product of federal standards on power plants and federal standards on mobile sources, namely cars. And both of those are at risk by this administration. And they're going to affect air quality, and DNZ works on water quality issues. So, if we're going to deal with the environment and make a statement, we ought to, we ought to reiterate, we were serious when we made these commitments, and we're going to carry them out, never mind what anybody else is going to do. And secondly, that we strongly urge against the kinds of cuts to effective EPA programs that are, that are being talked about. That would be my suggestion. I think this document, to me, strikes, the rhetoric is very highly partisan, it seems to me. And I don't object to it, Mr. Mayor. If you want to sign it, it's up to you. But I would like a statement that's more factual and more based upon what we've done and the commitments that we've made and our intent to carry them out and the reasons for that. Anyway, just suggestions.
Other folks?
I think we should participate in this, and I think the statement that Mr. Shields and Kate Walker and Susan Finerelli put together last week does speak to what our current efforts are. I think there was something that went out, I saw on Facebook--
On Facebook.
--today about that. And I think that ties into what Mr. Snyder is saying. Also, on that Facebook page, there's a link to, and it says, "Solarize ended in June 2015." Can we fix that? I may have a link to the current Solarize.
What do you think?
I was just going to agree that I think it's a good opportunity for us to talk about what we've been doing to date. I don't have concerns with joining in, but I think it's good to talk about what we've already been doing and reaffirm.
So, what do you all think of two things, then? One, sign this. Secondly, issue-- I mean, frankly--
And I would hope we could include reductions in funding and the ability of the EPA in critical areas such as water quality and air quality, because, again, those, there's no question they're going to hurt the region and the health of the region. There's no question about either of those.
So can you put, go ahead.
Are you talking about not doing anything at our meeting next week?
What do you mean?
Making a statement.
Oh, we can do that. I was hoping to do it before then.
Yeah.
Like, my thought was that Mr. Shields could put something together in the near future with staff's assistance, like tomorrow or the next day, or something that people can review tomorrow and then get it out the next day. That's a press release that says, you know, city joins whatever commitment, and then reiterates whatever the other things we've done, and just get it, push it out in a press release, and then whoever picks it up, picks it up. At least we put our, you know, or whatever you call it, a flag in the stand. And are people okay with that?
Yeah. One other point, I'm sorry, I've actually thought a lot about this, and I know it's late, but we ought to set the factual predicate here. In other words, we ought to, we ought to say that water quality and air quality, I don't know, is fundamental, and these actions that we're objecting to would jeopardize that or something.
Why don't you put something together, Mr. Shields? We can edit it better tomorrow when we're awake than we can write it tonight.
The general tone of it, there will be things that the city is for rather than things that the city is against. And that'll be sort of the organizing principle.
For effective environmental...
For strong environmental programs.
EPA and things like clean power plants and that kind of thing, yeah.
Is Kate Walker back tomorrow? Is Kate Walker back? Yeah, so why don't you try to figure out how to deal...
We'll do it.
Send it out so we can all turn our fingerprints on it, and then the idea will...
All right.
All right. What else do we have tonight before we break?
While we're churning out press releases, I saw you sent us an email about the credit, the bond ratings coming out. Was that attached to a statement that, you know, went to the news press or anything like that? Or don't we do that? Didn't I remember one year where we did that?
It was routine surveillance, and it stayed the same. The backstory was they were going to drop our positive outlook because we have so much debt coming on the books, and so we got them back on the phone and threatened a formal appeal and kind of raised a stink about that. And so they said, okay, we'll put the positive outlook back on, and we'll see how it all works out.
Good. Good work. You earned your pay. That's good.
So because of the fact that it was kind of routine surveillance and maintained, we didn't put a press release out. S and P and Fitch did theirs back in the fall also.
Do we think it's important to do that in advance of maybe issuing a lot of debt?
Well, it would've been great if they'd gone to AAA, we definitely would've put a big press release out. And that's kind of what I was hoping for, but...
What else we got?
Come on, Tootsie, horn, man.
So...
Due to my excellent match, and uncovered during...
So what you're telling me is if a press release is going to go out, it's going to go out on my Facebook page, right? I mean, seriously.
It would be that Moody's maintains positive outlook.
Yeah, I mean, the risk of doing this, the risk of doing this is what? That we're going to, like, annoy them or something? I mean...
No, there's no downside.
Okay, well, if there's things in life that have no downside, I say let's do them, because there ain't many things like that that I can think of.
I guess the only thing I would've said is we should've done it back for the triple As, because, you know, we're almost...
Now, most people will not know, you know? You can just roll it right up in there, three graphs, and you're done, you know?
Can you just do all three at one time?
Yeah, sure.
The third one came in. Here's what happened.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah. Well, that was what your email said.
Okay, very good.
It's just, sure, wrap it all together.
All right.
The Moody's write-up does plug possibly the council's action on the budget...
We're getting there.
...with the contribution reserve.
Two real fast things. Speaking of communications things, I want to thank the communications department for their quick action on Facebook today, where they advertised quickly that a child was missing and then really effectively that the child had been found. And that was good, so kudos to them. And on the community meeting on January 10th, I've seen some signs around City Hall and the library. I would like those signs to be at the schools as well.